Welcome to the July 14th meeting of the Glendale City Council. May we have a roll call, please?
Councilmembers Draymond.
Here.
Friedman.
Here.
Najarian.
Here.
Weaver.
Here.
Mayor Quintero.
Here.
The flags salute tonight will be led by Councilmember Weaver and the invocation by City Clerk Rita McKenna.
Joining with me in our flag salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Shall we bow our heads? We come together this evening to conduct the business of this great city and ask for blessings in doing so. We are thankful to live and work in this very special community. We ask that our city be granted prosperity through the sound decisions of this council. Finally, we ask for guidance in our daily lives that we may be positive role models for future generations. Amen.
May we have your report?
The agenda for the July 14, 2009, regular meeting of the Glendale House, I'm sorry, Glendale City Council was posted on Thursday, July 9, 2009, on bulletin board outside City Hall.
Next, please.
We have presentations and appointments. At 3:00 A. is the agenda preview for the meetings of July 21st, 2009.
Mr. Starburg.
Yes, I'll go to Yasmin Beers for the review. Yasmin?
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, for July 21st, there are no housing or redevelopment agency business agenda items. For the Glendale City Council meeting, under consent items, we have General Manager for GWP, Glorieta Transformer Facility; Director of Public Works, the Gladys Drive Slope and Roadway Repair Project. Under adoption of ordinances, we have ordinance adding chapters to the Glendale Municipal Code relating to commercial special events. Under action items, Director of Human Resources, proposed ordinance for introduction to amend the salary ordinance for the City of Glendale employees for their compensation; Director of Human Resources, memorandum of understanding between the City of Glendale and the Glendale Management Association; the General Manager of GWP, it's amending sections, lots of sections of the Glendale Municipal Code regarding the payment and enforcement of water rates and electrical rates; General Manager of GWP, implementing advanced metering infrastructure meter data management system for electric and water meters; Director of Public Works, 2009 congestion management program; Director of Public Works, American Recovery and Reinvestment Act grant projects; and the Director of Public Works, Brand Boulevard Maintenance District for fiscal year 2009-2010; another one for Director of Public Works, amendment of the City of Glendale, 2009-10 citywide fee schedule; Director of Public Works regarding the 710 Tunnel. And we have one item under hearings, and this is for the Director of Planning, Appeal of Design Review Board case number, and it's located at 3522 through 3534 Foothill Boulevard. Mr. Mayor, that concludes my report.
All right, thank you. Next, please.
And item 3B is a presentation by the Airport Authority on its capital improvement program.
Your name for the record, sir.
My name is Dan Fager. I'm the Executive Director at the Burbank Bob Hope Airport. Thank you, Mayor Quintero, for inviting me here today to speak to the council and the residents of City Glendale, to let you know what's happening at the airport in terms of capital improvements that we're making to improve the infrastructure, safety, and security of the airport, as well as the improvements and investment we're making in the community to improve the quality of life for the people that live in the community that are impacted by the operations of the airport. If I can, if I can get the technology to work. Let's see. There we go. In the fiscal year that we just completed, we spent over $23 million making improvements in various aspects of the airport operation. As part of our extension project for Taxiway D, we widened our engineered material arresting system. This is a material that we place at the end of the runway to capture aircraft that are in trouble and are unable to stop at the end of the runway. This material was originally installed at the very end of Runway 26, and last year we actually made it wider to create a bigger target so that in the event that an airplane was in trouble, that airplane had an opportunity to veer to the north as opposed to veering to the south. To the south, you can see the airplanes that are parked at the airport terminal in close proximity to Runway 826. There's a close-up of the EMAS. We spent $4.7 million rebuilding Taxiway A. We spent $214,000 moving the service road along Taxiway C to improve the separation between the runway and Taxiway and the service road. We spent $417,000 repaving Parking Lot C. We spent $1.2 million improving the Terminal A baggage claim area, both architecturally. We put some blast protection into the front of the facility. We replaced the baggage claim equipment, and we just made it a much nicer facility to operate out of. We spent $197,000 replacing the airfield lighting standby generator. We removed an existing 20-year-old diesel generator, replaced it with a state-of-the-art diesel generator with a particulate filter that reduces NOx emissions and is compliant with the current emission standards for diesel engines. We spent $7.5 million completing the inline baggage inspection system at the Bob Hope Airport. The Bob Hope Airport is now the 14th airport in the United States to offer 100% inline baggage inspection. We no longer inspect bags in the lobby of the terminal. This is the most safe, this is the safest and most reliable method of inspecting baggage before it's placed on an airplane. And we're proud to say that we are one of the few airports that have achieved that goal. We received some UWASI funding, Urban Area Security Initiative funding, and we've put it to good work improving the security of the perimeter of the airport. We spent $379,000 extending, putting in some additional fiber optic around the perimeter of the airport to support that effort. Here's a before and after picture of one of the homes that we've sound insulated as part of our residential acoustical treatment program. Between homes and schools, we've sound insulated well over 1,500 homes and four schools at a cost in excess of $100 million. This is an investment by the authority in the quality of life for those people that live in the vicinity of the Bob Hope Airport.
Can I see the before and after pictures again? Is this the right agenda item that we're discussing? Actually, we're discussing vinyl windows. Oh, this is, oh.
They're actually triple-paned.
Triple-paned?
They are triple-paned. They're acoustically rated windows. The cost of treating a house like that is roughly about $50,000, including the cost of the design, construction, management, and supervision. But for $50,000, they get very high-quality windows, they get an air conditioning system, they get replacement of the front door and the back door, and other treatments to reduce the noise infiltration into the home. As I said, over 1,500 people have now received that treatment. The Airport Authority was the recipient of a $3.9 million American Recovery and Reinvestment Act stimulus fund to rebuild three taxiways at the airport. That project has commenced and is currently underway. We estimate that that project will create over 40 jobs, equivalent of 40 jobs, and we're very happy that the federal government elected to give us some of the stimulus funding. In the coming year, we have about $34 million worth of capital improvements programmed, including a continuing investment in our residential acoustical treatment program. The FAA has asked us to install an engineered material arresting system on the westerly end of the Runway 826 approach. We told them, if you give us the money, we'll put it in. We're in the process of doing our taxiway reconstruction project. We intend to invest over $3 million in airfield and terminal security projects. We're proposing to begin the installation of a common-use passenger processing system, which will give us basically state-of-the-art ticket check-in and podiums at the hold rooms. We want to replace our 30-year-old analog noise monitoring system with a state-of-the-art digital noise monitoring system. We want to buy a new firefighting truck, and we have some $8 million in other miscellaneous projects that we intend to do this coming year, totaling some $34 million worth of construction opportunities for people at the Bob Hope Airport. We thought we'd take this opportunity to give you and the public insight in how they can participate in the bidding process at the Bob Hope Airport. We have initiated an outreach program trying to get as many contractors, especially local contractors, involved with the airport. We've been using various ways to find out and identify which contractors are actually out in the marketplace. We've begun contacting them using fax, email, phone, and their websites, and we're creating a list of interested contractors, which we continually expand as more contractors become involved. We are notifying contractors who've expressed an interest, either through email or fax, that there are projects that are out to bid. And for our larger projects, we do place ads in various newspapers, including specialty There are different ways to become a bidder at the airport. One is to call the engineering department at the main airport number, 818-840-8840. You can register online at www.bobhopeairport.com to receive bid packages. You can also look at the Dodge Report, look at the postings for job opportunities that we post in the three city halls of all three of the Tri-Cities, and you can respond to the newspaper ads that we do put out. One of the projects that we're very excited about is our Regional Intermodal Transit Center. This is a potentially very large project at some $100 million. This project takes advantage of the fact that the Bob Hope Airport, to my knowledge, is the only airport in California that has walking-distance proximity to both Amtrak and MetroLink. We have Amtrak service to Ventura County, the Pacific Surf liner, and we have MetroLink service from Ventura County to downtown Union Station, traveling on the railroad track that's on the south side of the airport there, and dashed in yellow, stopping at a train station in the Red Oval. We also have train service on the north side of the airport, which is the Santa Clarita Line for MetroLink. That's the MetroLink line that ultimately runs out to Lancaster. That also will be the future site of high-speed rail going up to the Bay Area. And we believe that building an intermodal transportation center at the airport will link airport, train, bus, rental car, bicycle on that line, and maybe in the future even high-speed rail. The project involves the construction of a fairly large structure that would house a consolidated rental car facility, an intermodal transit center that's connected the long snaky line that goes up to the terminal up in the upper left-hand corner, is a covered moving sidewalk that would allow people to go from the terminal by a moving sidewalk or walking on their own through this covered walkway directly to the corner of the transit center. That transit center is an elevated structure, and buses would drive up a ramp to that structure, and that structure, as you can see, is immediately adjacent to the Bob Hope Airport train station, which is the long green block. It would be connected to that train station by an overhead passage that goes across Empire Avenue. This development also allows us to build a CNG facility here at the airport, which will actually allow us to convert our bus fleet from diesel to CNG. Here are a couple of illustrative views of what the transit center would look like. The sea of blue on top of the transit center represents solar panels. We intend to make this a showpiece of solar power generation. Hopefully, it'll be neutral. You can see there's the structure on the lower right-hand corner is the overcrossing from the transit station over Empire Avenue going out to the two railroad tracks on the south. The structure on the lower-left side of the drawing is the terminus of the moving sidewalk as it ties into the transit station. And here are just a couple of other views of the facility. In the lower right-hand corner, you can see the publicly accessible CNG facility. This project will be primarily funded by revenues from the rental car operation. Because this will allow for some off-airport rental car facility right at the beginning, the area that you see those two buses parked on would be the initial starting of the project. The open areas near where those buses are parked represent an area that if we were to receive federal funding, we would expand the size of the transit station. We are aggressively seeking federal funding for this development to provide that portion of the facility which is not directly serving airport passengers. And finally, I'd like to take this time to talk a little bit about the Airport Authority's mission statement and its commitment to being a good neighbor. The Airport Authority, for many years, has been trying to implement a full mandatory curfew at night to replace the existing voluntary curfew at the airport. On May 5th of this year, the Airport Authority submitted an application to the FAA asking their approval for a full mandatory curfew. On May 29th, the FAA deemed our application complete. We're the first airport in the United States since the 1990 Airport Noise and Capacity Act was passed to actually get to the point where we've submitted and deemed complete an application for a curfew or an access restriction on a Stage 3 or the so-called quiet commercial air carrier type aircraft. On June 22nd, the FAA began a 30-day public comment period. They publish in the Federal Register. That 30-day comment period expires on July 22nd of this year, and we encourage anyone who wants to make comments directly to the FAA to make comments, voice your opinion about a mandatory curfew at the airport, and address your comments to Victoria Catlett at the FAA. The address is on the screen there. I'm here to answer any questions that you may have.
Any questions for Mr. Fager? No questions, Mr. Fager, but let me say I appreciate you taking the time to come this evening, and as most of you know, Mr. Weaver and I serve on the commission, and I think I speak for Mr. Weaver in saying you're doing an excellent job and your staff. You've got a great organization there, and I'm very appreciative for everything that you do for the residents of Burbank and for Glendale and Pasadena, and hopefully this...
And if I can put the plug in, if you're planning travel, then please choose the Bob Hope Airport over our competitors. It's good for your community.
Matter of fact, my wife has an out-of-town trip that she has to take all the way to the East Coast, and she's flying nonstop on JetBlue.
All right, and I'm sure she'll enjoy the nonstop experience.
Well, thank you.
Thank you very much for the opportunity.
All right, next, please.
And item 4, our City Council and/or staff comments.
Let me start, not with comments, but tonight, we're going to adjourn the meeting in memory of Lance Corporal Pedro Barbosa Flores, a Glendale resident who attended Hoover and Daley High School. Lance Corporal Flores died on July 11th during combat in Afghanistan. He was 27 years old. He also died with his Master Sergeant Jerome Hatfield from Virginia. They were both killed by a roadside bomb. Flores was a light armored vehicle crewman assigned to the 2nd Armored Reconnaissance Battalion Regimental Combat Team 3, 2nd Marine Brigade. He joined the Marine Corps in March of 2008 and was promoted to the rank of Lance Corporal in December of 2008, and he deployed to Afghanistan in support of Operation Enduring Freedom in June 2009. They were both assigned to the Hellman Province area along with 4,000 other East Coast Marines. Mr. Flores awards, Lance Corporal Flores' awards include the National Defense Service Medal, the Global War on Terrorism Service Medal. He was stationed at Camp Lejeune, North Carolina, and his formal military training included Marine Combat Training and the Light Vehicle Crewman School. The services are pending. If you want more information, you can actually contact the Glendale Chamber of Commerce and the Patriotism and Citizenship Committee should have some information on his services. I believe his body will be flown back to the West Coast and will be here in Glendale over the weekend, so our condolences to his family and friends here in Glendale. Are there any... Mr. Draymond?
Yes, I have a couple of council comments. One is, I'd like to know where we are for the public that's concerned, that has contacted, I assume all of us, I know I got emails, that I forwarded on to the city manager regarding the searchlight issue for those looking in tonight. Mr. ...
Is that the, what we know as the REVO Cafe? Former REVO Cafe?
Yes.
The, indeed, some of the concerns expressed in the email that you received and forwarded to me indeed seem to be borne out. Today, the operators of the business there were given a notice to desist in operations. There were activities there that do not seem to be adequately permitted. They were also given notice that the use of the clay lights obviously would normally require a special permit, but the lights at this point have been taken out of operation. So, further follow-up by code enforcement and legal with respect to the out-of-code compliance situations there.
Thank you very much. And the second question, I guess, goes to Mr. Zern. It's the ongoing saga of nighttime work in the flyover area. The most recent email I received from constituents was talking about five consecutive weeks of nighttime work, then two days off, and then four more consecutive weeks of nighttime work, plus three to five, 12 days of 12-hour work, and then the concern that to date there's been no noise reduction efforts brought forth, and then, so can you give us a little bit of an update where all that is?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Draymond, the first thing is, it's a total of 13 days, so those, I think what you're referring to are actually days, not weeks.
That's why I'm asking, because the constituent that is sending the email is saying weeks, not days.
It's a total of 13 days that are actually spread out from generally August to towards the end of the year, October, although there are initially upfront, we'll see, I believe it's four consecutive days that will have night work, which is the most intense portion of the project. As you're aware, this is the part where we're going over the railroad tracks and adhering to the policies of the railroads, the various Southern California Railroad Authority along with the freight lines that are requiring us to do this. We did have a general meeting with the residents last week. We had an attendance of about 10 folks there and gave them all of this information. We had letters as well, and of course, we're always willing to sit down with anybody who wants follow-up to that. As far as noise attenuation, we have sat down with the contractor, and everywhere that we can attempt to avoid any excess noise, we are doing that. I think one of the things that was explained in nighttime work that becomes a major issue is the backup alarms that were required for safety purposes to have on the large vehicles. Well, we've actually come together with plans where we're going to limit the amount of backup. We can't take those alarms off, obviously, but we're limiting, in fact, even getting routes so that vehicles don't have to back up to try to avoid that alarm. And we will continue each day to work with the contractor. Anything we see, we'll try to step in and correct it. And as we tried to tell all the folks down there, we will do everything we can to keep it to a minimum, but in this particular case, getting it down to these 13 days was the best we could do in working with the railroad.
Is it possible that maybe what they're talking about is five consecutive and then four consecutive weeks in which there are days of nighttime work? Is that possible?
That's possible. That's possible. I can, I think in a letter that we sent, I have to double-check, a couple of weeks ago, we laid out the actual project schedule. Those we also passed out to the residents, but I'd be happy if you have actual addresses, I can contact the resident and give them an absolute project schedule. If anything changes, we also said we'd keep that posted on our websites and...
And if I could add to that, so people understand, the amount of rail cars running during the day hours were restricted to the night hours when there's fewer trains on. When they're putting up the false work before they pour, put in the rebar and do the pouring, that false work going up is where the problem is. Explain what that is. False work, that's the wood framing that will hold the rebar, the steel and the concrete that is poured on the deck that you can see on the west side. If in that false work going up, if it were to fall and they were working during the day, you could have immense tragedy. Also, if they're putting it up and anything falls, like nails or anything else, and lands on the tracks, it could derail a train. So I imagine after each night, they have to sweep the tracks, make sure everything is clean, so there's no other time possible for them to do it, that at night, and try to do it as efficiently and as quick as they can. Is that about right, Mr. Bagdani?
I thank you for the clarifications, and there's a number of people that want to know, and they're asking.
How about trying to explain?
Mr. Bagdani, your name popped up in a couple of the emails related to something about 50% reduction in electric bills?
What?
Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, last week, we had a community meeting with the neighborhood. We notified the entire area. We have a large mailing list. We give them an update on the project status, and we discussed the nighttime construction. One of the issues, one of the residents raised at that time was that since their concern about noise level at nighttime, they like to shut their windows. It's summertime and it's hot. Would the city give them some kind of a discount or reduction in their electrical bills during the period where we are doing nighttime construction, because supposedly they will have to run their conditioning at night? So, that's something that was requested from us. I informed them that, I'll check into it, I've discussed it with Mr. Zern, and so that's the extent of it. We have not told them that is a possibility. Usually in construction periods or times, we have never done such a thing, so it's something that I shared with Mr. Zern, and that should be discussed further.
Big Dan, one other thing, the gap in the weeks, when the concrete is poured, you have a 20-day set before you can pull the false work down, right? 20 days at least.
That's correct.
So that's why there's a gap of a month, up, pour, then down. There's a gap of four weeks.
If I may, if I may, Mr. Zern, my request would simply be that if we can get together with those constituents by email or whatever...
Absolutely.
And just touch base with them to, again, explain, or, again, or to fully explain what is going on and what we can and can't do, and beyond that, it would have to be something that would have to be agendized anyway we can.
And I would just ask any of you, please forward those to me, and we will make that personal contact right away and talk to these folks.
Okay. Two other quick things, Mr. Mayor. One is the, I would like to agendize, if there's anyone else interested, I would like to agendize a discussion on how we go about our appointments for our remaining boards and commissions. We made changes to that in 2007, I believe, or started discussions 2007 dealing with the DRBs. We talked at that point, we had a presentation from the city attorney that explained options for doing that with the rest of our boards and commissions related to tying them to individual council member terms, as we've done with DRB, and what the options are there. At that time, we said, let's see what happens with the appointments with DRB first and look at that in the future. look at that in the future. Well, I think we've been doing that now for some time, and I'd like to agendize discussion of that to see if this council would like to go forward with that, that or some other option.
Okay. Is there anyone else interested in?
I'm also interested, so.
And then lastly, Mr. Mayor, is our Glendale History Challenge. No one came up with the right answer. It was tough.
So, the prize is doubled for next week.
An all-inclusive stay at the Hilton.
Glendale History Challenge is a little something we do on Tuesday nights. Here's the current photo that we're looking at. This was last week's photo. This is a location in Glendale. It's a historic location. We're looking for someone who can tell us what this is or where it is and approximately when the photograph was taken. And you have to wait to call in till after the meeting is over. But if you guess correctly, you win a $25 gift certificate, in this case, to Farniente Restaurant. And if we could see the information, you would contact Chuck Wyke at our library system at 818-548-2042, or you can email him at C-Wyke, that's C, the letter C, Wyke, W-I-K-E, at ci.glendale.ca.us. That's C-Wyke at ci.glendale.ca.us. This is a, we can see the photo one last time. This is a very historic and significant site, and it has history directly related to the city of Glendale. Okay, good luck. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Drayman, any other? Ms. Friedman?
Last weekend, I had the honor of attending, along with Mayor Quintero and Councilmember Najarian, a conference for the Independent Cities Association. And we had full-day seminars on many different issues, including budgeting, fiscal responsibility, dealing with constituencies issues, and many other city government-related topics. We also got a chance to meet with other elected officials and senior staff from all over the region, and it was a very valuable couple of days. And I'm sure that lots of good policy will be coming out of it, both from us and from our surrounding cities.
Mr. Najarian?
I have a few, but I'll continue with the ICA Independent Cities Association Conference. A lot of the, a lot of what we learn isn't necessarily done in the actual seminars itself in the conference rooms. We do have a chance to mingle with other council people and, in addition to vendors and members of other governmental agencies. And in fact, one of, a couple of things that I learned was the red light cameras that we have currently installed in three locations in Glendale are currently wired and ready to start issuing speeding tickets as soon as the law is passed, which would permit us to do so. I think Mr. Quintero and I had a discussion, we were a little surprised.
Very much so.
But they're pre-wired, they measure not only the location of the vehicle in relation to the red light, but also the speed of the vehicle. So, all we have to do is lobby Sacramento to get a favorable ordinance, which would permit us to do that. And I told them that I would imagine that their stock would increase dramatically once that legislation is passed. One of the other discussions I had was with a gentleman from the LA County Public Works Department, and I reiterated to him the enthusiasm that the entire Glendale City Council has shown towards advancing the Waste-to-energy Plant at Shoal Canyon, whichever form it takes, the plasma or the gasification or liquefaction. And I'm not sure he was aware of the enthusiasm that we have all shown before in the past, but he said certainly that the director of the Public Works Division dealing with that is going to call you, Mr. Zern, and give you an update, and perhaps you can update us as to the status, as to when we could get something going up there. And this is the same group that came about two years ago, I think, to give us the different types of technology. But I told them, hey, we're waiting, we've only got a few more years left in Shoal Canyon, it's a great spot, and we're ready to hear what the options are. Just some of the side conversations that go on outside of the lecture halls. I was able to attend. It was a busy weekend for council, councilmember Friedman and Mayor Quintero. We saw each other a lot. We were all in attendance at the Armenian bone marrow donor registry charity dinner this past Sunday. Dr. Frida Jordan and Dr. Sevag Avakyan are doing a great job. It's the intention to genotype all the, as many people as they can, Armenian and non-Armenian, to register their genotypes in a bank in the event that a bone marrow, someone who needs bone marrow transplant due to leukemia, will be able to find a match in a donor. And the more people, Armenian and otherwise, that can get involved and have their genotype matched, would certainly save many lives. And we heard several testimonials from people who were doomed to, doomed to a death by leukemia, who were genotyped and matched and eventually are on the road to recovery. So, congratulations on that, that great event. I'm going to save the last one for you, Mr. Quintero. I'm not going to take all the other events, so I won't be a ball hog this evening.
Okay, Mr. Weaver? All right, yeah, starting with the conference, both Mr. Najarian and I were very, very surprised that these cameras not only have the capability to measure speed, but in fact, are doing it. Their operators are watching people come through those lights at high rates of speed, but there's nothing they can do with it because the state of California prohibits ticketing on the, on those particular intersections using their cameras. However, I asked the technical rep what states did allow it, and they rattled off a whole bunch of states, Maryland, of course, Arizona, just a number of other states throughout the country that have that capability. So, hopefully, here in California, the legislature will pass the law, and that will definitely help to cut down on speeding in intersections and then the ability to put them on streets like Glen Oaks Boulevard, Canyada Boulevard, et cetera, et cetera. Then there was also a lot of excellent information about water conservation throughout the, throughout the state and the water projects and how they're doing. And well, it's obvious to everyone, and I know everyone in the audience knows, that we are in a drought, we're in a severe, severe drought. But they focus not only on California, but on the west, the Colorado River and the drought conditions that have gone on there for eight to 10 years. And the Bone Marrow Project, as Mr. Najarian said, and Ms. Friedman will attest to, very inspirational to hear from people who are directly affected by cancer, leukemia primarily, and were saved thanks to the matching and then the transplants. And then finally, the three of us attended the Armenian Cultural Foundation ribbon cutting, and for that, I want to specifically thank Dr. Katamannukian, who contributed, I believe, $250,000 to the, to the building. And the Community Development Block Grant funding also helped, and a number of other donors, Melkonian and Kazangian, a number of donors contributed to the building. So, there'll be a, it's quite an interesting building, very modern, and I think it's going to serve the community very well. There aren't any other comments? Any comments from staff? Okay, we'll move to the next item.
Item, excuse me, items 5A through F are consent. They are routine and may be acted upon by one motion. Any member of council or the audience requesting separate consideration may do so by making such requests before motion is proposed.
Okay, now, ask that 5D be pulled, I have a card. Okay, 5D and 5C.
Move the consent calendar on the remaining.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmembers Drayman?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Mayor Quintero?
Yes. Would you read 5C into the record?
Item 5C, Director of Public Works regarding Grandview Avenue Pavement Damage Repair Project Plan Number 1-2930, Spec. Number 3360. At 5C1 is a resolution adopting plans and specs and directing the city clerk to advertise for bids.
Starber?
Was there a question? You want a staff report?
It's simply a revised resolution.
Is that what it is?
Yes.
Okay, so it's pulled for a revised resolution. You want to explain quickly what it is, Scott?
Certainly, Mr. Mayor, members of council, the original resolution included the specification number and one plan. It was Plan Number 12930, when in fact, there are actually four plans that go along with that specification. You do have a revised resolution that sets forth the series of four plans as opposed to the one plan that was on the original resolution. That's the only shape.
I'll move 5C on as revised.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmembers Drayman?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Mayor Quintero?
Yes. Would you read 5D into the record?
Item 5D, General Manager of Glendale Water and Power, regarding authorization to apply for grant funding of the recycled water extension project for Hoover High School, Toll Middle School, and Mark Keppel Elementary School. At 5D1 is a resolution authorizing the city manager to submit a formal application for $800,000 from the Clean Water State Revolving Fund through the California State Water Resources Control Board.
Mr. Steiger, would you give the public an idea of what this is about?
Yes, Mayor Quintero, members of the city council. GWP plans later this summer to initiate a project to extend our recycled water system to the three schools, as noted, to provide recycled water, fairly substantial amount of recycled water, actually. It's approximately a $1.1 million expenditure, and we are proposing to apply for approximately $800,000 worth of funding from the state Water Resources Board.
How close is the nearest line?
Approximately one mile, a little more than a mile.
And running along where, Central, San Fernando?
Central.
Along Central. Ms. Friedman?
Would the water be used for irrigating their fields?
Yes, yes.
Question? Ms. Najarian?
So, the school district is not able to apply for this directly?
No, this is something that we have to apply to, apply for.
And then by using, would this bring it to their doorstep, essentially?
Yes.
The recycled water? And then by using recycled water, they'll obviously experience significant savings in their irrigation usage?
Approximately 25 percent.
So, it's yet another way that the school district and the city are partnering?
Yes.
Okay. Does Burbank do this for their schools, do you know?
In some cases, yes.
Okay, so we're at least moving in the direction that the high level of cooperation that is perceived between the Burbank City and the Burbank School District?
Yes, very much so.
I'm glad to hear that. Thank you.
All right, I have one card. Aaron Kazazi.
Good evening, Mayor Quintero, members of council. I like to see this. This is really great for us to provide reclaimed water to the school district. As you know, I've been trying to push reclaimed water now for nine years, and we haven't really moved forward that much, we've been stale. Of course, I'd like to see it different areas. I wanted to bring reclaimed water to Chauvinia's Country Club area for the golf course and the Cheviocnos and Rancho San Rafael, which will be utilizing about, maybe at least 10 times more reclaimed water than this one school is. And I remember the cost three years ago to bring reclaimed water to Rancho San Rafael and Cheviocnos was estimated at $1.2 million. We have a very small portion, 800,000 now, which only going to be using about one-tenth of the reclaimed water that we, we could have been saving 10 times more somewhere else, which we haven't done. So, I would still encourage us to go ahead with this and provide more reclaimed water, whatever we need to do. We need to request more money from the federal government. I remember I talked to Assemblyman Paul Krikory a while back, and he said he'd be more than glad to work with it to see if we can bring more, more money for reclaimed water too. As long as we're talking about the school district, also, I was not here last week when you made a decision about Glenwood area, Center Midian. I don't know if you recall, many, many years ago, I came over here when they were doing some study, I said, the best solution would be to put an overpass, a pedestrian overpass between the schools, and that will eliminate a lot of your traffic problems, will eliminate all your security guards, policing. That would have been the best solution to that, and I still say that should be the best solution to that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I have a motion. So, move.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmembers Drayman?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Najarian?
Yes.
Weaver?
Hi.
Mayor Quintero?
Yes. Next, please.
Item six are oral communications. Discussion is limited to items not a part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. Council may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. The city manager may refer the matter to the appropriate department for investigation and report.
Okay, this is the announcement portion of oral communications, and I have a card from Hannah Maximova.
Hello, Honorable Mayor, City Council members and staff. My name is Hannah Maximova, and I'm here with my son Linus, who's two and a little tired. Hope he's loud, I apologize in advance. And Guillaume Lemoine, we're representatives of the Steering Committee of the Monterey Community Garden at 870 Monterey. Our garden is worked by 26 families, and I'm very pleased to report that the garden is flourishing as well as our community. And we're producing wonderful organic food. Guillaume is holding a sample of what we've produced. Our plot alone has made dozens and dozens of zucchinis that we've eaten and given away. Our garden uses reclaimed water, which saves both money and valuable potable water. And we're also pleased to announce our grand opening, which is open to the public on Saturday, this Saturday, July 18th. For more information on the garden and the Coalition for Green Glendale, we've got a website at green-glendale.org.
Thank you very much, and let me give the little gardener a couple of pins for good behavior.
Can you tell us what time the grand opening is and where?
10 o'clock on Monterey Road.
10 a.m.
10 a.m.
Monterey Road by the on-ramp to the 134.
That's right, and by the bar.
Yeah.
Thank you.
And you guys have done a fantastic job out there.
Thank you, it's been wonderful.
It looks great.
Thank you.
See you then.
You bet.
Thanks.
It sure does look good. I donated some, I don't know what to call them, anyway, some large objects for planting that I had for a while, and I noticed they're being, they're being used, but it looks great from the, from the road, and it's just getting greener and greener in there. Okay, that's the end of oral communications, the announcement portion. We'll move on to action items. If there's anyone wishing to speak on the action items, please turn in your cards, turn in all of your pink cards to speak on the action items. Any person who is not timely in turning in a speaker card shall not be allowed to address the item unless the speaker arrived in the council chambers after I made the announcement. So, please turn in your speaker cards. Next, Madam Clerk.
At item 8A, Director of Parks, Recreation and Community Services, regarding replacement of the tennis courts at the Adult Recreation Center. of the Tennis Courts at the Adult Recreation Center. At 8A1 is a resolution adopting a negative declaration pursuant to CEQA. 8A2 is a motion directing staff to enter into an agreement with the Glendale Unified School District for the renovation and joint use of the Glendale High School tennis courts. At 8A3 is a motion authorizing the city manager to enter into and execute a professional services agreement with David Volt's design for preparation of design and construction documents.
Mr. Starber.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'll go to Dave Ahern, project manager for this project, to give you a brief staff report. Dave?
Mayor Quintero, members of the council, the report before you tonight asks for a couple of actions. One is to adopt a negative declaration for the environmental review of the Glendale High School tennis court rehabilitation project. You'll recall, this project is proposed to rehab the existing tennis courts at Glendale High, six tennis courts in total, and that's part of the mitigation to replace tennis courts that were removed at the Adult Recreation Center. So the environmental document reflects that this is essentially the rehab of an existing facility, and it's not a new project in terms of a new use at this location. The second step is to get approval to enter into a joint use agreement for the tennis courts between the school district and the city. This is, in effect, an amendment to our master agreement for other sites, and this simply adds the Glendale High School site to that agreement with the particulars to that site. And then the third step is to award a contract to David Volt's design group for designing the construction documents that are involved in the rehab of the project. So it's more than just rehabilitating the tennis court surfaces, it's adding ADA compliant bathrooms where none currently exist, adding ADA compliant parking where none currently exists, creating ADA compliant path of travel throughout the site where that, where path of travel may exist, but it doesn't comply with ADA requirements, and then creating security fencing, replacing the lighting, and it's more than just the heads on the poles, it's the poles, the lights, the conduits, probably the power feed to that, and then using energy-efficient lighting versus what's out there currently. So there's a lot of work in all of that. We anticipate that we can get this all designed by the fall, go to bid, start construction in February, and be done in May. And the total cost on it with contingency is about $86,000, $87,000. That's kind of an overview of it, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Mr. Najarian, did you have questions on cooperation?
Did you say these are going in Glendale High?
Yes, sir.
Well, that's great, I'm glad to see cooperation between the city and the school district. And the resurfacing that's going to be done, this is not your typical blacktop with a few lines on it.
No.
This is a, I don't know if you can use the state-of-the-art term to describing this, but this is a significant upgrade and a premium material that will be used for durability, and traction, and safety, and performance in terms of bounce, and grip, and all that stuff, is that correct?
That's correct, that's correct. Part of it will be determined by the condition of the concrete that's out there, and we won't know that until we beat blasted, and then see, there'll be a couple of choices for surfacing materials, and we'll bring you back choices and then a recommendation for that.
Mr. Weaver.
Ah, I don't know if you know, but when was the last time these tennis courts were refurbished? Do you have any idea?
I actually don't know, it's been quite some time, though, they're in fairly poor condition.
I think Mr. Weaver last played on those courts.
In the 50s, I was playing on them, I wondered, I've never seen them change since the 50s, so it's been a while.
They're due, they're due.
And the other question, I was wondering, you're going to do it, at what time do you anticipate construction starting?
We hope to start construction in February, although we know...
It's not going to interfere with the softball field to the north, parking in the lot, when is tennis, isn't that in the spring, too? Seems like you might be interfering with some school activities, but I'm sure you've coordinated with the school district on that.
We've been talking with them, and we'll make arrangements if we have to relocate one of their teams temporarily, and it may be that we phase the construction so that we do, you know, a portion of the courts, and we'll look at what their needs are and figure out a phasing schedule if we need to.
Where does the ADA parking go, in the existing parking lot?
No, it would be adjacent to it, and there's a small area, a small driveway area that's currently unimproved, and so we basically put in one handicap accessible parking. And part of this goes back to the separation of the uses between the public school use and the public use of the tennis court when the schools are closed.
Okay, thank you, it's about time.
Well, all kidding aside, the bounce, and the grip, and the traction, and the tongue and the cheek, and all that stuff, I just want to compliment the council for basically resurrecting this project, along with the Glendale School Board. And it is a good joint use project, and it does show cooperation my colleague was talking about, but I just wanted to give special thanks to my colleagues, and to then-council member Yusefian, who was on the council at the time, for bringing this project back. And I think none of us are very, there was an article recently in the paper about this, I don't think any of my colleagues or myself are happy about the loss of recreational facilities of any kind in the city, and particularly the courts at Central Park, but the project evolved the way it evolved, and it is the way it is. And so what do you do about that then? And this is a good way to help pick up some of the recreational needs for tennis courts. That plus what this council has looked at for a possibility at Fremont Park. So for our tennis players, this will be an added benefit, and for Glendale High School, it'll be an added benefit. So I am relatively happy with the way this has gone, and I want to just, again, thank my colleagues for that.
I'm also very happy we've moved forward with this project. It's going to work very well, not only for the students of Glendale High School, I think we're going to have even more superior tennis players coming out of Glendale High, but also for the community at large. I mean, it's obviously located in south-central Glendale, and I think it's going to be used by the same people that went to the Central Park Courts over the years, so I'm very pleased we're doing it. There's certainly, it's going to be a state-of-the-art facility, no question about it. I am concerned, though, I hope that we're going to make sure that the parking and the impacts aren't part of the whole car park scene. It's on the east side of the campus, so all activities and parking, I'm sure, will take place on the east side of the campus, in the adjoining parking lot, and on Verdugo Road, et cetera, so as you do your planning, I hope you keep that in mind, I know you have, but just wanted to...
We evaluated that in the environmental review, and in fact, the tennis courts are in use now. The school district's, Scott Price, the Assistant Superintendent, has been great to work with, and issued us a temporary use permit at the beginning of June, and the tennis courts have been in use since June 6th, so it's up and running, and don't seem to have any impacts at this point.
And it's obviously one of many projects that we've done with the school district, dual-use project, so one in a long list, and I hope we have more, and we do, we have more on tap. Mr. Draymond.
Just a housekeeping question, Mr. Mayor, are these items 1, 2, and 3 all to be taken as separate motions?
They can be taken together.
They can be taken.
Yes, sir.
Okay, motion?
Move 8A, 1, 2, and 3.
Second.
Mr. Najarian.
I would hope that well before these courts are completed, that the whole issue of the use of these courts, in terms of the vendors, and the franchise, and the restricted hours that used to exist on the Adult Recreation Center courts, come back to council. We had heard at that time that they weren't open to the public, people were prohibited from using it, so whatever those issues are, well before these, you know, we cut the ribbon on these courts, let's review that so we don't have a last-minute rush to try and understand how to best manage them.
Got it, yeah, very good point. Now, let's review it, and let's come to a decision as to what course we're going to take with private vendors operating on city property. All right, we have a motion in a second. Roll call.
Council members, Draymond.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Quintero.
Yes. Turn in your cards for your, for the action items. Next, please.
At item 8B, Director of Public Works Regarding Update Report Regarding the Los Angeles County Department of Public Health Place Grant Policies for Livable Active Communities and Environments, and Collaboration with the LA County Bicycle Coalition. At 8B1 is a motion to note and file the report.
Mr. Starber.
Mr. Mayor, as you can see by the individuals moving to the front of the chambers, we're prepared to give you a staff report and answer any questions on this matter if you so desire.
Mr. Mayor, let me just introduce Colin Bogart, who's the coordinator for this project.
Sure, and I do have a card, so...
Giving you an update, as requested.
Mayor Quintero, council members, city staff, good evening, my name is Colin Bogart, I'm with the LA County Bicycle Coalition. As you know, the Place Grant Safe and Healthy Streets Plan is a collaboration of the LA County Bicycle Coalition and the City of Glendale to make Glendale a better, safer place to walk and ride a bicycle. Place Grant has a team that includes staff from the following city departments, Public Works Engineering, Public Works Traffic and Transportation, Parks Recreation and Community Services, the Planning Department, and the Police Department. I want to tell you what we've been doing for the past six months, and then what we plan to do for the next six months, and I have some PowerPoint slides to help illustrate our activities so far. Since our first meeting with council in December of 2008, the team and I have been working on the following: We've been promoting the Place Grant Safe and Healthy Streets Plan through various means. We created a logo and launched a website in February. That website is currently updated roughly every one to two weeks. We also organized a history ride with the Glendale Historical Society in April, and we had about 65 people join that ride. We promoted Bike to Work Day on May 14th, and we helped to organize a pit stop for cyclists at City Hall, as well as pit stops at three bike shops in Glendale. And then, as you may know, we organized a history walk last weekend, again with the Glendale Historical Society, it was a very successful event, we had about 90 people attend that event. We've also been conducting outreach to existing community organizations here in Glendale. Some of those groups include the Montrose Shopping Park Association, Sunrise Rotary, the Armenian Relief Society, Glendale Community College, Glendale Homeowners Coordinating Council, and the Glendale Chamber of Commerce. All of these groups were invited to advise and support the Glendale, the Safe and Healthy Streets Plan, and we received a positive response at all of these meetings. Through these meetings and our public events, we have been building a stakeholder group which now has about 250 members. We've also met with city departments and commissions here in Glendale, including Neighborhood Services, the Fire Department, Development Services, the Library Managers, the Parks Commission, and the Planning Commission. Once again, we invited all of them to advise and support the Safe and Healthy Streets Plan, and once again, the positive, the response that we got at all these meetings was positive. We've also been developing a proposed physical project for the Safe and Healthy Streets Plan. This project is a bike pedestrian corridor on Riverdale Drive and Maple Street. It connects three parks, Pacific Park, Maple Park, and Car Park. The project includes improvements such as street trees, curb extensions, wayfinding signage, and charros. Charros, this is a slide right here of what charros might look like on Maple Street. This is a relatively new street marking, it's in wide use in Northern California and states across the country. It essentially shows cyclists where they can ride safely, it provides a visual cue for cyclists and motorists, that cyclists belong in the street and where to expect them, and they're also much less expensive and easier to implement than bike lanes or bike paths. Most of the improvements in the physical project will be covered by existing stimulus-funded projects that intersect the corridor, and we've also conducted a public outreach meeting at Pacific Park on June 10th to discuss the physical project. We had about 20 residents attend that meeting, and the response to the project was positive. We've also provided specialized training for city staff, paid for with funds from the Place Grant. We hosted a charo webinar in April, and we hosted a facilitator training seminar in June that included staff from Public Works, Parks, the Police Department, and the Planning Department. We've also participated in city efforts for pedestrian safety by attending the pedestrian safety training on May 16th, the Pedestrian Safety Action Plan Workshop, and the Safe Routes to School Workshop in March. The goal was to help ensure coordination of efforts between the Place Grant, the Glendale Safe Streets Initiative, and the Safe Routes to School program. Now that I've told you about the last six months, I'd like to end my PowerPoint slideshow for you, and tell you briefly about the next six months. In the remaining six months of 2009, the Place Grant team will be focusing on the following: We will be conducting public input meetings to develop policy recommendations for the Safe and Healthy Streets Plan. We have five meetings planned for October and November. We will be pursuing opportunities for additional staff training and policy peer review. Most notably, we would like to host a training seminar for bicycle safety and amenities to complement the Pedestrian Safety Action Plan already conducted. We will continue to work on the proposed physical project. We will be conducting pedestrian and bicycle counts in September, and there's a possibility that we may get some help from UC Berkeley's Traffic Safety Center in doing this. We will be working with the Parks Department on creating a walking map of Glendale. Right now, we're using a map from the City of Santa Monica as a model. We also see it as a very good opportunity to spread safety information for pedestrians. We will also be pursuing additional publicity and promotional events, so we have more rides, more walks, possibly documentary screening, or an author presentation at the Central Library in the works. And we plan to continue with further outreach to existing community groups. In closing, I'd like to say that this has been a fantastic team effort thus far. I've really enjoyed working with the city, and I'm looking forward to the second half of this year, and with that, I'd like to see if you have any questions for me.
Questions?
Just a comment.
Ms. Friedman.
I participated in the history bike ride, it was a really wonderful time, and you had a great turnout, and I know you had a great turnout for the walk you had last weekend. And I'm really pleased that the LA Bike Coalition is here doing this work with Public Works, and look forward to Glendale becoming a leader in the region in terms of complete streets and upgrading our roads for pedestrians and bicyclists. So thank you for all that you're doing.
Mr. Draymond.
I'm not on the air, now I'm on the air. So now, for the record, let me say it again, I'm very thankful for this grant, and Colin, you've done a wonderful job, and I'd like to thank you, Mark, too, for all of your hard work, it's going to make Glendale a much more bicycle-friendly community, and we need that at this time, and it's something we all hear from constituents constantly, you know, give us more places where we can ride our bikes safely, commute with bicycles, thank you very much. And I, Mr. Mayor, I had the opportunity to sit in on a meeting, a community meeting, an organizational meeting where Colin was updating one of our organizations about this very plan, and it was overall excellent reception of the idea, and he did a great job, I just wanted to point that out. Thank you.
Let me join the other council members and basically say the same thing, Mr. Bogart and Mr. Sturdivan, you can see the enthusiasm and the work that they're doing, and it shows, it's reflected in the report, and as time goes on, I think both pedestrians and bicyclists will come to realize that they can move around Glendale, but something other than a car. Mr. Mayor. Mr. Najarian.
Thanks, Colin, and what I'd like you to do, you're here for a while longer.
June of 2011.
Okay. What I'd like you to do, as we talk about all these bike routes, and the charros and all that, at some point in the future, when we don't have a real crazy agenda, I would like you to come before council and explain to the community how they can get started on a bike. on a bike. I mean, I used to ride a bike, one of those banana bikes or the big things, but that probably was the last time I've been on it. If I was interested in, let's say, one day a week biking to City Hall, or biking to the grocery store, to the park, what kind of bike would I need? What kind of equipment would I need? Do you even recommend it for someone my age? I mean, just sort of the, I mean, just sort of the nuts and bolts of getting people into the bike. I think a lot of people really support this idea of, you know, pedestrian-friendly routes, bicycle-friendly routes, but don't know how to take that first step. What type of bike? What, what do you really need versus what will they try to sell you? It's just sort of a nuts and bolts, maybe over one or two meetings when we have a lot of time.
We could do that.
You know, check with our city manager. I think it'd be a good, good refresher course for those who used to ride and maybe a new introduction to what really is involved: shoes. You know, do I need to go out and buy those fancy shoes that all those guys wear, or those fancy?
Spandex.
Spandex, you know? The water, water strap to the back with, I mean.
Yeah, they have to have wool. It's all that wool.
A realistic, a realistic bicycle user's explanation. I think it'd be interesting for all of us, and.
Okay.
I actually have a bicycle that I'm going to recommend to you, Mr. Najarian.
It's called a Harley, right?
Well, no, not the.
I thought you were going to say stationary.
Regular bike.
Maybe to give Mr. Najarian a little push, and in your honor, Colin, I'm going to officially ask Public Works to put a single bike rack behind the council spaces in the parking garage, and let's see how often we can have a bike put there. And I will guarantee that I will ride my bike to City Hall when I'm not wearing a skirt on council day. So, on my non-council days, since I now have my peneers to carry my materials in, I will promise to ride my bike here. So if you put that spot there, I will have it filled when I'm here.
Hi, Mr. Mayor. I'll park a bike for Mr. Weaver in the space. I don't know what he would do. I'll park it there.
I gained bicycles up long term.
Do we have any bicycle racks in the City Hall complex?
We have some out on Broadway, or Isabel, excuse me.
You have a, you have a bike rack outside the doors of GWP right now.
Okay.
Both sides.
Yeah, we have the old lockers, but we will certainly take that challenge, Ms. Friedman.
Right, everybody's getting healthy here before, at least talking about it, because I think that is part of this initiative. It's more than.
Absolutely.
Than, you know, trying to eliminate automobiles and fossil fuels. I think it's also part of just an overall trying to get healthy. Okay, I have one speaker, Eric Hovland.
I just wanted to say that I'm a Glendale resident, and I'm a regular bike commuter. In fact, I just commuted from my place of work about eight miles away to this city council meeting. And I have, I am an L.A. CVC member, as well as having in the past tried to work on bike issues within Glendale. And the, the one thing I wanted to say was that I approached Colin soon after I found out that he was going to be working on that PLACE Grant, and so I am familiar with everything he's done, and I think he's been doing a great job so far. I think that bicycling has only gotten better in the short months that he's been working. And I look forward to seeing what else he and the other people working on the PLACE Grant can, can do to just take this momentum and keep moving forward.
Do you mind telling us, you said eight miles, what part of town?
I work on, just on the other side of Laconyada.
Oh, boy. So it's easy coming home, but.
Yeah. Good morning commute's always tough.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, any other comments? Do I have a motion?
Move 8C1, 8B1, excuse me.
Second?
Second.
Roll call.
Council members Drayman.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Quintero.
Yes. Next, please.
Item 8C, Director of Public Works Regarding Status Report of the City of Glendale Safe Streets Initiative at 8C1 is a motion to note and file the report.
All right, Mr. Starburt.
Looks like I'm going to Traffic Engineer Tom Mitchell. Staff report, Tom.
Thank you. Mayor Quintero, members of the council, Mr. Starburt, Mr. Howard. As the, before you tonight is a status report on the City of Glendale Safe Streets Initiative. Given the name GSSI, I believe by then Mayor Drayman back in January when this thing was first presented by Councilmember Najarian. It was introduced in late January as, not an agenda, it wasn't during council comments. At that time, the project was studied, and it came back to council in end of March, which time staff was directed to proceed with the various items in the Glendale Safe Streets Initiative. The status report tonight, I'm going to talk about one primary point in that, because the other ones I know have been reported in the past. I'll go into that now. It's a six-point plan. These are numbered here, one through six. The first one, the Community Pedestrian Safety Training. That was a workshop that was on Saturday, May the 18th. It was a half-day seminar, training session that I know was reported on by Councilmember Najarian on the following Tuesday. It was attended by 40 or 45 people. It was extremely well-received. It included numerous stakeholders as well as city staff. Point number two, the Pedestrian Safety Action Plan. I'll come back to that. That's what I want to dwell on more heavily this evening. Item number three, the stakeholder input and participation. That was really involving in number one with the stakeholders that did participate on that May 18th workshop. Items four, five, and six were an encouragement of the council to certainly pursue any grants that we can get that would have to do with pedestrian safety. The city, since the year 2002, has received about $1.7 million in grants from these various sources through Caltrans, federal agency, and MTA. And I would report that, at this point, in mid-April, we applied for a Safe Routes to School Pedestrian Safety Grant through Caltrans for an amount of about $900,000. We were selected locally by Caltrans District 7, which meant that it would be forwarded to Sacramento for further review. And the words that we're hearing is that we will receive that grant, and it should be awarded next week. So, that will not be actually received until 2010, but it gets into their cycle as it goes from there. So, next, Tommy. The second point, the Pedestrian Safety Action Plan, or PSAP, it was a three-day seminar, Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday in May, eight hours each day. It was put on by the California Department of Public Health. They retain the presenters of the Federal Highway Administration and various consultants. And I would say, before proceeding further, it was an absolutely excellent training session. The presenters were, could not have been better. They were very skilled, very knowledgeable. They were very impressed with the City of Glendale, with what we had done and our participants, and I think it was mutually returned with that. Everyone thought that they were very, very good, very knowledgeable, very down-to-earth, and knew a lot of information about what works, what doesn't work, in terms of trying to enhance the pedestrian safety system. There were approximately 20 participants in this. They were predominantly city staff. It was much more technical and engineering-oriented than the session that had happened on Saturday, which was the four-day with the stake, excuse me, four-hour with the stakeholders. We did have a TPC commissioner. There were members from the school district, as well as Glendale Creek College, their police department. Otherwise, our police department, Public Works, Traffic Engineering, engineering. We had planning staff, redevelopment staff, community development for there for the first day, which was more of an overview or an introduction as to how do you put together a pedestrian safety action plan. They went through almost 150 PowerPoints, and they were things that were very thought-provoking. This is not a format like a college lecture where you sit there in the back row and never participate. They not only encouraged, but they basically required interaction of staff asking us questions, and they were very good, very, very good. The experts kind of went back a frickin' frac. There were two, one from the FHWA and another gentleman who had been in the business for almost 40 years. And they would alternate on the presentation. It was interactive training. As I say, participants were encouraged to ask questions. We were asked questions ourselves of how do we do things in Glendale now? How can we improve those? And as I say, they had numerous examples of how we could make things better. On day one, as I say, it was an overview of our three Es of enforcement, education, and engineering programs and strategies. How can we use those to proceed to, excuse me, to develop a safety action plan? Days two and three were just pretty much staff at that point, and engineering and police. And we went through what they call a template. It was really kind of a toolbox of different solutions. What's, what's happening out there today? How are things going to be done that can improve your pedestrian safety in the city? And they looked at it from not only improving it to the standpoint of making it safer, but also to literally encourage people to walk. And as they said, if you make it safer, then people may be more inclined to walk, but also they just said it's something that really should be done. So from their perspective, it was a two-pronged approach. So, we went through each of the templates, each of these toolboxes. They have rating systems on this of different things or design that you can implement, what you can expect in terms of return, what can be a reduction, as they always put it in terms of crashes. And so, we're using those, we're going through those, we're refining what we have and to try and make things, you know, much better. Some are very straightforward, very technical. How high do you put a push button at a traffic signal? Others get to be a little bit more philosophical, that we anticipate bringing to TP, or to, to the TPC, and ultimately to you for your input. But as I say, overall, it was extremely well-received. It was free of charge, which made it even better, but I would highly recommend it to any other city. We were one of 12 that had been selected. We were the first ones to receive this, and I don't think it could have gone any better. So, if you have any questions, I would be happy to respond about this or any of the other points.
Any comments or questions, Mr. Najarian?
So, are there any specific ideas that we got that we can implement quickly, such as striping? I know one of the, one of the ideas was putting the stop limit line a few feet further back from an intersection to give just that extra cushion of safety, perhaps the crosswalk lines also? I mean, anything that, that you can throw out that us laymen would understand?
Well, Mr. Najarian, those are two examples that we are going to bring. In fact, what I mentioned earlier about the Caltrans Safety Grant, that's going to be applied to six of the schools in the Glendale School District. And part of that is a local match that we're going to be doing that has to do with signing and striping. The $900,000 is largely going to be for physical improvements, so bump outs, things of that nature. But no, you're right, there are new technology, a better visibility of how do you stripe a crosswalk? What colors do you use? Do you use zebra striping? Do you use sometimes just the latter? There are different things. And there's no, they were very good to point out that there was no real totally right or totally wrong, not wrong in the sense that we're doing anything wrong, but just things that we ought to consider: Where we put crosswalks, unmarked crosswalks that we heretofore have been somewhat reluctant to put into place for fear that pedestrians would be lulled into that false sense of security. They saw both sides of our coin, and we saw both sides of theirs, and they gave us some good examples in other cities that we've been in contact to see what their records have been. There are other issues with the timing of traffic signals, of left turn phasing. They recommended, for example, that pedestrians never cross if you have a permissive left turn where people cut across them. They said you should do it always with turn arrows, and we pointed out, well, that's not totally what Caltrans says. But it's things like that that we're going to be looking into, things that are relatively expensive, inexpensive, I should say, that, that we think that we can do, and it'll be good not only around the schools, but citywide.
And I do, I do want to say just add, as, as happy as we were with them, I think it was a mutual, mutual admiration. They were also very happy with Glendale, and as I mentioned last week, they are going for a grant. It's a million point six to be split up between four cities. And Mr. Mayor Quintero signed the letter of support for that, so hopefully there'll be some good news, continuing good news in this relationship that we have with Berkeley. And I heard they were helping Colin Bogart with the bicycle issues as well. So it's a, I think it's a good outfit that we've associated ourselves with.
Right, when you raised that last week, I've got a copy of the technical proposal, and it's, that Berkeley did submit to the National Highway Traffic Safety Administration. They didn't put the dollar amount in through here, but in seeing what they're trying to do, Glendale's been identified as, as they put it, which kind of sounded a little scary because it said that we'd be an intervention city, community targeted for intervention. But they would work with us. I don't know if it's to become a case study like a Harvard Business School-type thing, but that they would work with us. It really funds their staff. I mean, Berkeley, to operate, has to get grants, is to operate. But they would be working with us, and they mentioned with police and with engineering, they mentioned with the Bike Coalition, that all would be involved. It would cover a three-year period. And there is the first six months of setup, and then two years of doing, and then the last six months is evaluation. And I spoke with them about this. It was Jill Cooper who had been involved with us on your, on the Saturday seminar. And she was very optimistic about it. And you're right, we had a very good relationship with them on the Saturday, as well as the FHWA people on the following week.
Thank you. Ms. Friedman?
Well, first, I want to thank staff for their involvement and their hard work, and also Mr. Najarian for helping to facilitate this program. I participated in the first day of the public session that Berkeley did, and it was very interesting. And it transcended what you think of as sort of normal traffic programming, and it really went into urban design and how we think about roads and buildings and where we put buildings, putting them at the curb to encourage pedestrians instead of back behind parking, and, and all kinds of, you know, they really had thought it all out, from, all the way from the way that you design a city to make it walkable, down to how you design intersections. So it was, it was really interesting, and I would really like to see this really turn into policy and meaningful policy, and I think it will be really valuable. And to that end, I would love to see, as this progresses, some sort of an ongoing report of changes in policy so that we can track the actual implementation of some of these programs, so that the public can see, we used to do it this way, but based on these sessions, we're now going to do it this way, and then we'll know that it really brought value. And to that end, I would like to see the TPC, the Traffic Commission, being used much more actively in terms of discussing this policy and implementing it, because council, we should be looking at these things sort of from the meta level, but we can't get into every single change in traffic policy. And it would be good to have public involvement and to have the public portion being represented through the TPC. And so they could be the intermediary between staff and council, and they, I think, could do a lot of the legwork and, and help develop these policies, you know, sort of on behalf of council before it comes back to us. So I would really like to see their, stepping them up in terms of their involvement and really bringing them in, and making them part of what I hope are very substantial policy changes in the city.
I'd like to say two things on that. The first one, you mentioned that land use was one of the categories that received quite a bit of attention on the Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. One of the things that impressed the FHWA presenter was that we did have a cross-section, a wide cross-section of staff that participated, and they were somewhat amazed of how we tended to get along and appreciated what the other interests might be. And usually it's, you know, the engineer's just doing the engineer thing, and, you know, they don't care anything else. But the point that you brought up about land use planning and where buildings are placed, and if parking on street, and where, you know, things of that nature, which really would not be a thing that would fall under the domain of Public Works typically, but obviously does from the other. And through, you know, from DRB and other areas where those things are put, but they're not hard policies as far as I can tell. The other thing is Commissioner Weissman from TPC attended, and he was for the three days, and we spoke quite a bit about that. One of the items that they mentioned was that it's good to form some sort of a committee to be able to bounce things off, and we can. And we kind of concluded, we didn't know if we wanted to have yet another committee in Glendale, but the TPC would seem to be an ideal sounding board, whether that would be expanded or not, but at least would be someone that we could pursue from there. As I say, Commissioner Weisman was there, and he took a very strong interest in this program as well. So we would welcome that.
In terms of the land use, since, as you said, it transcends the Public Works Authority, we need to be sure that planning, that our urban planners, that that whole department is kept up to speed, and that whatever part of it takes for their policies to be amended or set into stone, to be sure that we get that part of the picture, we need to do it. Because I think without that part, without that component in, in really realizing that the way that we do urban planning has a very big bearing on the safety of our streets and the safety of our built environment in general, we need to be sure that that part of the picture is also made into policy. So we need to be sure that when it's appropriate, they're brought in and, and can weigh in and, and are a part of that.
And we in Public Works should be happy to copy Hassan on everything we do. That's a joke.
I am also, I'm also very pleased that this initiative is progressing the way it is. And I'm very happy that we have the input from the public and, of course, coordination of all the departments. And I do think the Transportation Parking Commission would be the one that would be sort of the best organization to run it by. However, we could absolutely have an ad hoc committee that would supplement the five appointees if brought in some people from the chamber, whoever else we wanted to include. But all in all, I'm very pleased. I think we're headed down the right track, and I just find it interesting that the city of Glendale is taking direction from Berkeley. Now, that, that's a new one. That's an absolute new one in this city. Okay, I have two cards. I'll start with Bill Weisman.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, city staff, the public. I'm Bill Weisman from the Glendale Transportation and Parking Commission. And I had the opportunity to participate in the intensive three-day workshop for the Pedestrian Safety Action Plan, and it was intensive for every day of those three days. It was very much an interactive type of session, and a lot of good ideas and thoughts came out of that. And I wanted to thank the council for their leadership in bringing these resources to Glendale to help us out, from the federal level, the state level, from the University of California. And the feedback that the participants in the workshop got from all of those folks was that they were very happy to be working with us here in Glendale because, you know, we're committed to moving forward with, with policy changes and the other changes that we need to make to, to get our streets a little bit safer for pedestrians and bicyclists. One of the products that came out of that workshop is an eighty-two-page template for a pedestrian safety action plan. And right now, that template has been circulated for review, and the folks that participated in the workshop are looking it over. And there's going to be a point where we're going to get our feedback back to Traffic and Transportation. And hopefully, at that point, someone can come back before you and present some of the things Councilmember Friedman was asking about in terms of actual policies that, that may change as a result of this that we discussed. I think that follow-up is absolutely critical to this. We need to keep our attention on this and keep it moving forward. And I hope we can work effectively with the Glendale Unified School District in getting this implemented. And one last thing I did want to mention, there was some, a question about, do we have any projects that are currently going on or currently that we could look at that are related to some of the material that we talked about in these workshops? And I would recommend that you look at the pedestrian crossing for Griffith Manor Park, which I believe came before you recently. If you look at that pedestrian crossing, it's actually fairly innovative in the designs that it uses. It has the advanced limit lines that were mentioned. It has a pedestrian safety island that's ADA accessible for wheelchairs and for blind pedestrians. And it's sort of an example of some of the innovative types of things that I think we can be doing in the future. And in my last few seconds, I'd like to thank the community gardeners for the lovely basket of fresh fruits and vegetables. I really was not expecting that, and it looks delicious. Thank you.
Thank you. Herbert Milano.
Good evening, Mayor Quintero, members of the city council, city staff. My name is Herbert Milano. Well, I definitely support the, the moves that the city have taken with regard to the Safe Streets Initiative. I'm thankful to Mr. Najarian for taking a lead in this particular endeavor. And Ms. Friedman, I think your comments today were absolutely wonderful. They were right to the point, they were intelligent, they really covered many things that are really quite necessary to try to reduce the number of pedestrian injuries. What I would like to present to you is, is perhaps an idea that I've been presenting for a fairly long time. But oftentimes, when I hear about the budgets and the assignments of money and the grants that are received and the different policies, at the end of the day, the actual end result is some type of quantitative result, a performance-based measure. For about three years in a row, the city had roughly 129, 128 injuries per year. But something happened special during the past year in which, through enforcement, there was a reduction of about twenty percent. And I never did hear what was it that the police did in order to reduce it by that much. It was a fairly significant reduction. And the three Es of traffic safety, as you know, is enforcement, education, engineering, but now we have to add planning. So it's now the three Es plus a P in order to, to have the type of outcomes that I hope you are, you're aiming for. But I think that at the end of the day, you need to have some type of goal to say, after all these millions of dollars and all this effort, what is the target number of pedestrian reduction in terms of injuries that you expect to have? Are you to go down to fifty injuries a year, twenty-five injuries a year? Because if you don't have a goal, then you don't have really a way of evaluating whether all of this work and all of these studies and all of these efforts are really rendering any, any outcomes. I have a question, though, with regard to the $286,000 for the traffic signals that are being allocated. I have, I wonder why that money is coming from CDBG. It was always my thought that traffic signals come from the general fund, that these type of expenditures are the purview of that. And I know that now, Mr. Najarian, out of your studies that you just did with regard to these independent cities, studies of budgets, perhaps you can enlighten me with regard to why it is that we are assigning this type of money, $286,000, from the Community Development Block Grant? I thought those monies came from HUD for purposes of addressing the needs, you know, that are generally not covered by the general fund. So nonetheless, I wish you could enlighten me with that. Thank you.
Okay. Any comments? Have a seat, Mr. Milano. You're giving your opinion. Any comments or, okay, Mr. Starburg? Did you have a comment on the CDBG funds?
Well, it's referenced in the report as funding over the past several years from a number of sources for improved pedestrian and vehicular safety. It happens to note two signals at the intersection of Chevy Chase Drive and Garfield Avenue and Verdugo Road and Harvard. I can't speak specifically as to how it is. They were funded from CDBG, but it's not uncommon to utilize CDBG for public improvements in qualified neighborhoods. I would suspect-
In low-income neighborhoods?
Low-income neighborhoods. I would suspect that they were part of an overall neighborhood improvement program.
Okay. Any other comments? Need a motion? Move eight, C1.
Second.
Call, please.
Councilmembers Draymond-
Yes.
Friedman-
Yes.
Najarian-
Yes.
Weaver-
Right.
Mayor Quintero.
Yes. Next, please.
At item eight D, Director of Planning, regarding planning department review procedure for proposed residential window replacements. At eight D1 is a motion directing staff to continue the current review process. Eight D2 is a motion directing staff to exempt window replacement from design review. Pardon me. And at eight D3 is a motion directing staff to modify the process as specified.
Okay, is there anyone wishing to speak on item eight D? Anyone else hasn't turned in their cards? You need to go to the back of the room and-
Oh, she turned, she turned in a card. She thought you were calling on her.
Yeah, yeah. If you haven't turned in a card. Okay, anyone else wishing to speak on item A D? Okay, that's it. Taking our cards. Mr. Starburg.
Mr. Mayor, I'll go to Director of Planning Hassan Higani to introduce staff report. Hassan?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. I'm going to, in a minute, to introduce Jay Platt, who has prepared the staff report to give a presentation which includes about, I think, eight slides to better aid in explaining the current process. Please keep in mind that what the staff will be presenting will be the process that we have been developing since early 2006. This process has gone through some minor changes, and we're about to introduce possibly additional changes. At the end of the staff report, we would invite any changes that the council would like the staff to do, or any other modification you'd like us to consider, and we will be here to answer questions. Jay Platt from the Planning Department.
Thank you. Good evening. As you just heard, the Planning Department is responsible for reviewing window applications for replacement windows as part of our overall design review process. In addition to reviewing new applications, we also look at legalization requests, which is a situation where someone has installed windows without a permit, and they've received a violation from either Neighborhood Services or Building and Safety. These are among the most common requests that we get at the Planning Department. It seems that when people are proposing to put in new windows, it's often driven by a desire to remove older, single-pane windows and put in windows that have double-pane glass, which definitely have energy benefits that a single-pane wouldn't have. But there are many different reasons that people put in windows. The purpose ultimately of our review, the kernel of what we're doing, is trying to determine which projects we can call exempt from Design Review Board review. Basically, which ones we can approve at staff level, and if there are projects that we can't, as I go through the guidelines that we've developed, you'll understand how that might happen, a project would then have to go to Design Review. I have a few slides to just introduce the subject. And Mr. Higani was a little off in the number of slides. You have a few more than eight. I can get this to work?
It's ten. It's a two thousand.
Glendale has a collection of many buildings of many different eras. We do have a large stock of older buildings built before World War II. A lot of these buildings have wood windows, and that's one of the most common types of windows we're seeing replacement applications for. And I think what we're trying to look at is how windows aren't just functional devices that keep the air in or out and keep the bugs out and that you look out the window through, but they're also an inherent part of the design of a house. Here's an older Craftsman with some of its original windows in place, and I think it gives some shadowing, some detail that would be missing if we didn't have those windows. If you can imagine a house without windows, well, we have one in Glendale. Here is a house that has no windows on the front facade. Just as an aside, this is an application that came in to legalize windows on the side. When we first saw this, we were kind of horrified, and we're like, what's going on in this place? But there are windows on the house. We're going to work with the applicant to perhaps bring windows back to the front of the house. But I think you can see how a window gives a house, you know, more than just a functional character. It really has a role in the aesthetics, not just of that individual house, but of the street. Here are some examples of traditional wood windows, just to give you a sense of the variety. One of the key aspects of some of these older windows is that they are recessed in their opening. We're not just focused on wood. In fact, we approve many different types of replacement materials regularly. What we're looking for are windows that can start recalling some of the, some of the, some of the essence of what these windows can do. If you look at the photo on the lower right, that's actually a new window, so there are still wood windows being made that can certainly match historic-
Is that all wood, that Pella window?
That's an all-wood window, yeah. But there are, I'll get into a few of the different varieties in a couple of minutes. Here we have a couple of examples of houses that had windows removed and new windows put in. And this is, I think, why we've received direction from the Design Review Boards and from council in the past, that keeping windows as part of our design review process is an important aspect of our overall mandate to kind of make sure that the streetscapes and properties in Glendale don't lose so much of their architectural character that we really diminish our neighborhoods overall. Here's another example of a building that shows us that it's not just older properties that we're talking about. There are mid-century buildings where the original windows did have an important part in defining the character of the property. And when the window replacements come in, they're not always something that we can say are appropriate to the building. Focusing on our current process for a second, we are allowed at staff level in the Planning Department to exempt a proposal from DRB review if we can say, if we can determine through our review of the applicant's materials that the new windows that are visible from the street are not going to diminish the appearance of the property or of the overall neighborhood. And it's important thinking about what's visible from the street. We're not always just talking about the front facade. A corner house has two street facades. Houses with a long driveway running down the side have side visibility. So we're kind of looking at the bigger picture, but we do ultimately focus more attention on front facades and recognize that side facades may give us a little more leeway to help applicants use different types of windows on those locations. To make sure that this procedure is consistent, we're not just making it up as we go along, we have reviewed this with the Design Review Boards in a joint study session. There were two sessions, actually, in 2006. And through those sessions, we actually developed the current guidelines that we use. We also got indications from the Design Review Boards about the direction they wanted us to take with certain specific design elements of the windows that we'll talk about in a minute. The current process that was developed through that review, oh, I should add that the council also kind of heard about our process in April of this year, when we were talking about the broader issue of design review exemptions for the department, and we gave- Last year. Last year, excuse me. So, so, seems so soon, so recent. We basically showed you how we are reviewing these window exemptions, and you had no comments telling us that we were moving in the wrong direction at that time. So the process that we're using makes certain kinds of applications very easy. If someone comes to us and says they want to replace their windows in kind, if they have aluminum sliding windows and want to put in new aluminum sliding windows, if they have wood windows and want to put in new wood windows, we can quickly and easily write a staff-level permit for the applicant. If someone comes in and says, well, we want to use a fiberglass window, or we want to use an aluminum-clad wood window, we've determined, as we're looking at more and more of these applications, that there are a bunch of modern replacement materials that we find suitable for replacing a more traditional wood window. So you may have heard from some constituents that we're mandating that people use wood windows, and that's definitely not the case. But the review process has been problematic for many people, primarily because the Design Review Boards in their study sessions looked at vinyl windows as a particularly problematic replacement material. So I just wanted to show a few more slides that can go over the vinyl issue. And there we go. So vinyl applications have proven to be a little more problematic for us. I'm sure, in fact, I know the council has heard from applicants that we've had some contentious dealings going back and forth. But ultimately, we are working with the current guidelines. Because of our experience with some of these applications, we are proposing, and I'll discuss this in a minute, to revise some of these guidelines to give more predictability to the process and find more opportunities where windows like this might be something that we can find acceptable for certain installations. We have also singled out, and this is also coming to us from the Design Review Boards, two other issues that aren't exclusively a problem with vinyl windows, but we often find them in vinyl applications, and that would be these internal grids where the windows are trying to recall the appearance of older divided light windows with plastic or vinyl or aluminum grids that are kind of sandwiched between the glass in these dual-pane windows. I think these photographs show why these can be problematic installations in terms of the reflection and the fact that they don't really succeed in what I believe people are trying to do when they're installing them. And then we've also found that these Z-bar vinyl window installations, actually, I'm sorry, these are examples of vinyl. Z-bar can be in different materials. It could be fiberglass, aluminum, or vinyl. The Z-bar is basically an easier installation type that allows installation from the outside over the existing frame, but it does create this kind of large band that goes around the perimeter of the window that gives it kind of a- the perimeter of the window that gives it kind of a picture frame effect that definitely is at odds with the earlier appearance. Coming back to think about vinyl as a material for windows, as you know, this is very divergent and we have, in the community, pros and cons being heard from a wide variety of constituents. People who want to put vinyl windows in and support their use in the city find that they're very affordable, find that they're energy efficient, and also think that they might have no or low maintenance compared to older windows. There are many groups and people who think that they are a problem when they come into the window openings on houses and buildings, primarily because they have a very plastic appearance. Many of them tend to be very shiny. They come in only two colors. You have a choice of white or beige, which isn't always in keeping with the color palette of various properties. And ultimately, vinyl can't be painted. So once you put it in, you've got white windows until however long it is that they are taken out in the future. I just wanted to add a note addressing some of these things. In terms of energy efficiency, there are many window types that have the same or better energy efficiency as vinyl, though vinyl windows can be very energy efficient. And then in terms of cost, there is definitely a cost differential between some of the materials that we're discussing, excuse me, discussing. And at the, at the low end of vinyl window production, we do get our most affordable windows when compared to other materials. Per the DRB-approved review process, we kind of add an extra step to an applicant's review process when they come to us. If they came to us for any other window, we'd ask them for photographs of the existing property, photographs of the window openings that they're proposing to change, and a plot plan and a window schedule telling us what windows are existing, what windows are proposed, and then something that shows us what is going to come in the future. A cut sheet or a brochure from the manufacturer so that we have some visual idea that we can file away so that we know what they're going to put in there. For a vinyl window installation, we have to look at the broader context of the neighborhood. We have many neighborhoods or many sections of neighborhoods in Glendale where there have been a lot of vinyl installations over the last 20 years or so. What the DRB found is that it's difficult for us to kind of look at one property in a neighborhood where so many properties have been changed and say, no, you can't have vinyl because it's a diminishment to the neighborhood, when we already have a neighborhood that's significantly changed over the years. To do that level of review, we ask people to do a photo survey of the area immediately around their house so we get a sense of that context. Usually, that's about 20 or 30 houses. We then take it under consideration. We work with staff to kind of look to see how many windows are original, how many have been replaced. Sometimes we can't tell. We might have to visit the neighborhood. Generally, before we can say that a vinyl window is something that's acceptable under the DRB guidelines, 60% or 70% of the windows at least would have to be changed in that section of the neighborhood for us to approve at staff level. And this brings us to the idea of kind of our case-by-case review. In the two years that I've been here and working with urban design staff and planning current staff, looking at windows, we are learning a lot about the technology of windows, about the types of installations that are available to people. And one of the key elements of putting in a new window is what kind of frame type that new window is going to have. On the left side, we have, all of those windows are vinyl windows at the top, but it's very similar process for vinyl, for fiberglass, for aluminum. The block frame is a window that's installed from the inside. It requires that the existing wood frame and sill of a window opening be kept, and then you install the block frame from the inside, you flash it from the outside. And what we're finding is that this can be a very acceptable solution because it preserves the sense of a recessed window, it preserves the sense of the window opening punched into the stucco or into the wall of the building. And in many ways, in many cases, we are approving these more and more as we found that this installation style works. The middle photo and the example above show a nail-in frame. This is generally something that's done with new construction and it's a post-war type of construction. It came in basically with aluminum slider windows that you start seeing in the 50s and 60s and we still have this style today. But what you get with these windows is very flush construction. This is for properties that never had a recessed window. And we find it a very easy process if an apartment building or a house comes in, where this kind of construction is original to the building or appropriate to the building, we can approve this kind of construction or this kind of installation of a window. What happens when you have the nail-in frame, though, if you were taking out a window and putting in a new one, you have to cut out the stucco around the window opening, take out the window, put the new one in, and then restucco. So it does add some expense to the applicant proposing that. But we get many people coming in with that proposal because that's the look they want. It's also got a very good weather seal in terms of its long-term durability. On the right, we have the Z-bar frame, as I mentioned before, which creates this picture frame, kind of window surround. It's something that we've never seen on traditional buildings. Sometimes there are wood window casings around an opening, especially on a Craftsman house. But what we found, looking at these in the field, is that these never, we haven't seen any at this point because technologies are changing, that can replicate the look of any kind of traditional casings around the windows. And we have found that we're having a lot of concern and the DRB has also expressed concern about this type of installation. So as we go through this, we are refining our process and what we're doing is finding that the guidelines that the DRB has given us are too vague right now. They're too vague for us at staff level and if they're too vague for us, they're definitely too vague for the public. What we're trying to do is develop a new set of guidelines that are going to be illustrated and have more information so that we can create a more predictable process that can lead to results where we think we'll be able to approve more and more vinyl window installations in situations where we think it's going to give us an appropriate appearance on the property. Here's an example of a block frame vinyl window that was set into existing openings. And from a distance, I don't know that anyone is really going to be able to say that this is a vinyl window, a wood window, an aluminum window. It definitely has the appearance that we're looking for when we want to be able to make staff-level approvals for vinyl installations. Here are a couple of other examples showing that there's a variety of windows out there that are available. And we're guiding a lot of applicants toward doing this and some applicants are like, well, I'll still have to paint the wood frame and the wood sill. We don't deny that that's true, but we're finding people doing it and people are actually happy with this type of installation and with the way it looks on their property. Here are some fiberglass block frames and these have external muttons, so the grid that's on the face of these windows is actually on the outside of the glass, which does give it a closer resemblance to the appearance of traditional divided-light wood windows. And these are made of fiberglass, which is a newer window material. The price of fiberglass right now is probably at the highest end of anything that we're looking at. We're hearing from people in the window world that prices are coming down a little.
Mr. Starburg?
On the block insets, are the companies now being able to manufacture them in varying sizes to fit existing openings?
Yeah, many of the companies can do custom sizes.
If you go through some neighborhoods in Glendale, there's very little consistency on size of windows.
Yeah. Yeah, we're finding, most people getting custom sizes isn't a problem. We do have people, a lot of people going to the Home Depot and other places like that and saying, well, they have these three sizes. And that's ultimately something. We're trying to maintain existing window opening sizes whenever we can. Just to show the kind of on-the-spot learning that we're going through, we had an application for this apartment building, a modern-style 60s apartment building that proposed, originally proposed vinyl Z-bar installation. We didn't think that we could prove the bright white vinyl on a building like this, but we found through, actually, the applicant found that there is a manufacturer making these Z-bar aluminum windows. And we looked at a sample of it and we thought that was really appropriate for this building. The owner put these in and appears to be happy with them. We think it's very successful every time we drive by. And I wanted to show you a couple of other slides here just to show how close, you know, these are near misses where applicants kind of did something that was good, they did something that we could easily approve if they had come to us. In both cases, I can't say that these were done illegally, but they're not something that we typically would have approved. On the upper photograph, we have the historic arched wood window that has the transom above and the wood window in the center. And those are aluminum windows on the sides. They chose to use a brown anodized aluminum material for that. If those windows were white, we wouldn't even look twice at it and we would say, this is a great solution. If they had put white vinyl windows on those two side windows, we would definitely want to be able to move in the direction of being able to approve those. The lower picture shows some fiberglass windows that were installed on a Spanish house. Again, it's a beautiful installation. One of the reasons we like fiberglass particularly is that it has a broad color palette. And if you change your mind in 10 years and you don't like that color anymore, you can paint the fiberglass to allow your house to change over time. The problem with these was that they had the internal muttons, which is kind of compounded by the fact that they chose a pattern that's more of a Craftsman style than anything that relates to Spanish. But again, I think we're looking at examples where this isn't, this isn't a diminishment of the appearance of the city. I think we're looking at solutions that are so close to being the right way that with just a little extra push from guidelines that we're proposing, I think we'll get a lot of good solutions for materials to allow kind of the broadest, or broadest number of choices for the consumers and for people changing their windows in Glendale. There are two kinds of windows that we're having the most trouble with in terms of how we can replace these. Steel casement windows were in use back in the 20s and 30s on some of our traditional houses, but also on some of our post-war, more modern properties. And steel casement windows have the quality of, because steel is so strong, they have very thin lines that you can't bring back with either aluminum or vinyl or fiberglass. Fiberglass is getting close, vinyl's getting closer. But what we found through a recent application that we're working currently with an applicant is there, there may be a way to use a modified Z-bar frame, to install a Z-bar frame into these openings that we think is going to be a potentially good solution. I'm not going to say it's a good solution until we see it in operation and we haven't finalized the application for that homeowner. But we're looking forward to finding a solution for these because this is one of the more contentious types of windows that we have. And then finally, I just wanted to show what we're calling special windows. There's a wide variety of these. Craftsman houses tend to be a place where you have these very distinctive, very complicated mutton patterns that are basically irreplaceable. We're not going to find a vinyl solution or any other solution that we know of right now to replace windows like this. We also have a lot of houses that have stained glass windows. Again, we're not going to easily be able to put vinyl windows in that can handle the weight of leaded glass or something like that. What the current guidelines that we're considering that we're going to bring back to council in August with your approval tonight is when an applicant comes to us with a replacement for a window like this, we'd like to send it to DRB. We don't, we don't think at staff level, we can say that losing windows like this would not be a diminishment to the character of the city. And we can't say what DRB is going to say, but they can take into account other considerations that we can't using our guidelines. So to close, I just wanted to let council know what we're looking for from you tonight. Basically, we are looking for direction on how we can best implement our Design Review policy. We know that there have been applicants in the city who are very dissatisfied with the process. I want to remind you, we've had a lot of applicants also who've gone through the process very smoothly and are happy with the results of going through Design Review with us. We think that the guidelines that we're working on, which are a refinement basically of the direction we've received from DRB, are going to be a huge help, not just for us, but also for people proposing to put windows in their houses. We think that it's going to also free, free up the variety of options that they have, which I think will be really important. You have three possible motions to consider tonight. Oh, I should add that in addition to giving us direction, we believe that you might want to consider some exemptions or incentives that might encourage people to kind of maintain the look of their original or older windows and give them some sort of incentive to make that choice a little easier. And that's something that you could consider and we could come up with some ideas for you and discuss them at a later date. The three motions you have to consider tonight are to direct the planning staff to continue the current process. You could direct us to exempt all windows from Design Review, which would basically say we are not looking at windows in our Design Review process. Or we, or you could ask us to modify the review process that the DRB approved, as I've discussed. Planning Department's recommendation would be for the third option because we think we are getting very close to having a set of guidelines that I think are going to be very useful for people here in Glendale. In addition to those motions, we're looking for three other things. So we have, we have a lot of requests tonight. One, we want to make sure that you're open to us being able to approve vinyl installations on the front facades of buildings when the situation warrants, as I've shown you a few pictures where we think we have some successful solutions. We also are very concerned, and I think one of the things that happens when people see these, these windows that have the internal muttons that are sandwiched between the glass, they just assume that's a vinyl window. I think those internal muttons are making people just hate all windows that have those. We would like to prohibit the installation of those at staff level. If someone comes to us and wants to have muttons on their window, I believe all of the companies at this point are making windows that have external mutton grids where it's on the outside face of the glass and will give some of the shadowing and texture that the traditional windows have. And then finally, in terms of these Z-bar installations, although I've shown you an example where we thought Z-bar was a very good solution on a modern apartment building, it's rarely a good solution on a more traditional structure. And we would like to be able to, with your, with your consent, not prohibit Z-bar, but look at it very carefully and find the solutions, as I showed with the steel casement windows, where the Z-bar might be appropriate. A modern apartment building, it might be appropriate. It's hard to see it appropriate on a Spanish colonial revival house, for example. So those are our three requests and if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Ms. Friedman?
Yeah. First, thank you, Mr. Platt, for your normal excellent presentation. One of the problems I've heard in the past is that GWP offers people incentives to put in vinyl windows or provides vinyl windows. Have you had conversations with GWP to find out if that's still their program and have they been cooperating with you in terms of some of your, to be sure that you're not tripping over each other or at odds?
We met with GWP staff last year, I believe, to talk about the issue. They still have their rebate program in place, but that is only for windows that meet certain Energy Star rating standards. So it could be any type of window. So they're not necessarily saying you must put in a vinyl window. They're saying if you put in a window that has, meets kind of two rating standards that they have, they'll give a rebate based on the square footage of the windows that are being installed.
I thought that they were doing vinyl window installation somehow through GWP.
Not that I've heard, yeah.
Would be the airport. Bob Hope Airport.
Yeah, the triple glaze.
I think that sometimes when people get those incentives, they don't realize kind of who's installing their window, from what I've heard from people. I've actually had people say to me, oh, GWP came and installed this window. So I think that we may have some very crafty salesmen out there.
That could be.
Any other comments? Okay, we'll go to the public. We have 12 speakers, starting with Kate Clark, followed by Leon Kirov.
Mr. Mayor, time.
Hi, my name is Kate Clark. This is my husband, Joseph. Unfortunately, the staff report does not tell the whole story about how window replacements are being handled. I bought a house that I'd been foreclosed on and not kept up well. The violation notice came in on the day I was scheduled to close escrow, so I was stuck with these issues to fix. And within six weeks, I corrected everything except for the issues where I had to obtain permits. I submitted the required paperwork to Planning Department to obtain a permit for my existing windows that were apparently replaced by a previous owner without permits over five years ago. They are vinyl windows. As required by the city's procedures, I submitted an application with photographs to show that maintenance of these windows, which has been in place for years, was consistent with, consistent with the neighborhood. I have now been working with the City Planning Department for more than seven months to get this resolved. It seems that no matter what I do, something else is always required. First, the city planner told me that if my neighborhood had other homes with vinyl windows, then mine could be accepted. So in December, I submitted pictures of several homes in the area with vinyl windows. I have handouts if anyone would like to see. He then requested that I send him pictures of homes that were closer to my home, so I did that, too. And then he asked me to take pictures of every home on my street, all the way down to the next intersection, vinyl or not vinyl, so I did that for him, too. In these reports, the summary is that nine of the 13, 69% of the homes across the street from me have vinyl windows, just like mine, with the vinyl grids, the insert mutants, whatever you call them. 11 of the 13 homes, 85%, have the grid style, whether they're wood or whatever material they are. Even after I made an appointment with Tim Foy to ask for help in this situation because it was taking so long, I was told that I may only keep my vinyl casings, but that I must remove the glass with the mutants and replace it with new glass. However, if I do remove those mutants or grids, I will no longer be inconsistent with my neighborhood since most of the homes have the grids. In addition to these findings, I ventured further and took tons of pictures throughout Glen Oaks Canyon, which is where I live. And so I have several, several pictures of homes with the same windows that I have and I sent those all on a disc to the city planner. In spite of the prevalence of these types of... In spite of the prevalence of these types of windows in the neighborhood, only at one point was I told that I could keep those vinyl casings. And, and one time I was told that I could, if I replaced the two-dimensional mutants with three-dimensional mutants, then I could have those grids. But then they retracted that and said that they were thinking of a different property, and that I had to just remove my grids completely. Since there is no requirement for this anywhere in the Glendale municipal code, I asked for a copy of the officially adopted design review guidelines for vinyl windows yesterday, which the Glendale municipal code says must be given to me. I was told that they were being considered tonight, and that I would have to pay for them. Tonight's staff report does talk about the grids, but circumvents the fact that there was not one word in the April 15th, 2008 information provided to council. Okay.
Okay, why don't you give us the materials?
Sure.
Give them to the city clerk, so he'll get to us. Right, and someone has written, so we can answer the woman's.
I'll make three, I'll make copies.
Leon Kiras, followed by John Locaccio.
Mr. Mayor, if I can, and do we have your, do we have your address in, in the material you submitted?
Um, it should be on the bottom of the letter.
Leon Kiras?
Hi, my name is Magda Mavian. I'm here behalf of Kiras, she's one of my customers. I'm a real estate agent, and I helped him to purchase a property in Glendale.
What's your name for the record, again?
My name is Magda Mavian. I purchased, I helped him to purchase a property in Glendale in March. Just like a previous case, a day after closing, we find out the windows were done without permits in 2003. There was no records of that in City of Glendale. We checked before, we were in escrow. So there is no way we can find out when we were in escrow. Basically, I tried to talk, talk to the listing agent, she had no idea about that too. So there is no way we can find out. And a buyer is going through, he, he's trying to fix this situation. Everything you tell, previous case, exactly everything she did, he did, he has a whole file of pictures. He's explaining to me how many times he went to Planning Department. He really want to fix this situation, he want to enjoy his house, but basically he got rejected. He, well, the, I'm here because he works Monday through Friday out of Glendale, and he's, he comes on only Saturday, Sunday, and he says that he's not enjoying the house. And he said if he knew that Glendale, City of Glendale is this, they're not going to work with him. He want to do, and he want to complete this here, and we want to fix this situation, and we want him to be happy in this house. It's a beautiful neighborhood, he's happy to be in this beautiful city. But he says, if, if, if I feel that I'm not going to be, I'm not going to be able to fix this situation, I wish, I know in the beginning, I wish I never buy this house. And this is really sad, because this is a beautiful time for this family, and I want to see them happy. I never been in this kind of situation. I've sold many, many homes, and every time I call them, and I want to know what's going on, and they complain and complain, it's really sad. When I went to their house, six people explaining to me at the same time, how many times, how many pictures they took, and I'm like, I have no answer for them. And the, the only question they have for me, they go, how come they did a poor job? From 2003 to 2009, nobody's seen this windows, nobody did any work, and, and now we are here. Somebody failed there, and in this many years, this should be fixed. And I know a lot of people have that same issue. You know, you know, years passed, like, maybe if, if there is a six, seven years passed, maybe there should be a special, you know, requirement for this kind of people? Because if, he said, if I was the one who did the work without permit, I'm willing to pay the penalty, I'm willing to do everything need to be done. But this case, he's being punished for somebody else's work. And like I said, everybody telling me, you should check with the city. We did check with the city, there was no information there. So we could possibly know what's going on before.
This was not a foreclosure, this was a-
This was a foreclosure property.
This is a foreclosure also?
Yes.
Okay, well, as we all know, that's what happens when you buy foreclosures. And you were, you just represented the buyer?
Uh, yes.
Okay. John Locaccio, followed by Rick Barnes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members, staff. My name is John Locaccio, I'm an architect, I'm the president of the Glendale Historical Society. And on behalf of our Board of Directors and Members, I strongly urge you to adopt Option Three in the Planning Department report, and direct staff to modify the current design review process for windows by finalizing the proposed window replacement guidelines. As described in the report, the guidelines will clarify the existing design review process and provide more predictability in the decision-making process. The guidelines should also strongly discourage vinyl windows installations on front facades in Glendale's older neighborhoods, where they're incompatible with the existing architectural style, and in other conditions as may be determined by staff. They should also prohibit the use of internal mutton grids and Z-bar frames when visible from the street, and when incompatible with the neighborhood. We also ask that council goes a small step further, and firmly commits to a policy of discouraging unnecessary window replacement citywide, particularly the use of vinyl replacement windows. And encourage, and provide incentives for the restoration and retrofitting of existing wood and steel windows, especially in our older residential neighborhoods. Council also must adopt, and the two previous speakers showed this quite clearly, and strictly enforce a zero tolerance policy on unpermitted window replacements, including imposing higher punitive fees on those who illegally replace their windows. Short of an outright ban on unnecessary window replacement, this policy would be the most logical and responsible aesthetically, economically, and environmentally. To that end, the window replacement guidelines should provide applicants with information and resources on window restoration, and include some basic facts about windows and window replacement. Now, I sent the council yesterday some, some facts, some test results, some studies that showed performance data, and lifetime data on vinyl windows, and some information on aluminum windows. I won't go into all of that, there was a lot of detail there. But I will just say that original windows, as Jay said, are an intrinsic part of the character, and therefore the value of older homes. Maintaining those windows is critical to maintaining the value of the home, and the value of the surrounding properties as well. Those old windows very rarely need replacing. With proper maintenance, wood windows will last, and we know this for a fact, in good working condition for literally hundreds of years. Even windows that have been neglected for decades can usually be repaired at a fraction of the cost of replacement. That's a very important point. Restoration of windows is generally cheaper than replacing them. Vinyl and aluminum windows, particularly vinyl, are inferior in quality to the original windows they replace, and they cannot be maintained. That's different than being maintenance-free. They can't be maintained. Unlike wood windows, which can be maintained by painting every several years, the inevitable and relatively, sorry, out of time.
Finish up.
Once vinyl and aluminum windows begin to deteriorate, there is no way to stop them, unlike wood. And replacing windows does not significantly increase a home's energy efficiency. That is a myth. Because 80% of a home's heating loss is not through the windows. It's through the floors, the walls, the roofs, the chimneys. A smarter alternative is to restore and weatherproof old windows, which, again, can be done at a fraction of the cost of replacement. Fit fireplaces with glass doors, insulate thoroughly. Just adding three and a half inches of insulation to the attic will have the same effect as replacing all of your windows. And upgrade to energy-efficient appliances. This would see a return on investment in only five years. It takes 60 to 100 years for the average vinyl window installation to pay for itself. So we ask you to take a leading role in this issue, and help us to preserve our, our old windows, and improve energy efficiency in a smart way. Thank you.
Rick Barnes, followed by Ann Collard.
Good evening, I'm Larry Barnes, President-
Oh, no, I'm sorry, Rick Barnes.
Oh, I'm Rick, I'm sorry. I'll be later.
Yeah, I've got your card. Rick Barnes.
He was assaulting with Mr. Milano.
Okay, Rick Barnes is gone. Ann Collard, followed by Margaret Hammond.
Good evening. So in reading the report on window replacement procedures, it struck me that the rules for window replacement are in essence the same for both historical districts and houses that are in non-historical districts. Both sets of guidelines state the same thing, that vinyl windows are rarely acceptable, and the Planning Department has the final say on what type of windows are to be used. It seems we are given the same treatment as those who live in historical districts, and I do not live in a historical district. So I don't understand why the City of Glendale even cares about my windows, but they do, and somehow I have fallen under the jurisdiction of the historical planner. The Planning Department is looking at window replacement through the single lens of historical planning, and I appreciate that you brought up the fact that we're, we're being told something else by the federal government and the Glendale Department of Water and Power, that we need to replace our windows for energy efficiency. It's cost-effective, and it also would update the value of my house. It makes me uneasy when one department gets to implement, implement their view of things without regard to what is reasonable and acceptable in the rest of the world. I'd also like the council to know that if I still go ahead with replacing my windows, it's going to cost me an extra $5,000 to conform to the Department of Planning's guidelines. That is the difference between Millgard vinyl windows and Millgard fiberglass windows. The work, the contractor's, you know, price is still the same, that's solely just for materials, is $5,000 more. They will look exactly the same, be installed exactly the same, the only difference besides the price is that fiberglass windows can be painted for $5,000. The proposed changes listed in the report give the Planning Department even more power, even more reasons to reject window replacements. They list things like operation of windows, window sills and frames, and even retrofit versus new construction, that was the whole Z-bar thing that he was talking about. And so I just would like you to please be aware that there's a very big price differential when you start comparing these different type, type of windows. We have to consider that these guidelines make window replacement cost prohibitive. And maybe the whole point here is to discourage people from replacing their windows, as the gentleman before me stated. Yet the federal government and our own Glendale Department of Water and Power are encouraging homeowners to install energy-efficient windows by offering tax credits and rebates. Vinyl windows are energy-efficient and cost-effective, and can greatly improve the look of a house. They are widely accepted and commonly used. There is still no law against vinyl windows, and as such, it seems unrealistic for the city to try and put a stop to this trend. And I'm not sure if any of the proposals on the agenda tonight will really address my concerns, because if we stick with the old, I'm stuck, I can't install vinyl windows, and the new proposed changes are, they're even more rigorous and give more reasons to deny. And I'll stop there.
Thank you. Margaret Hammond, followed by Larry Barnes.
Evening, Mayor Quintero, members of the council, staff, and audience. My name is Margaret Hammond. Having been a 50-year resident of Adams Hill, where there are many old homes, some of them hundreds of years old. The oldest house in Glendale happens to be on Cyclops, the Richardson House. A lot of people don't know that, but it is. And I have seen homes, I would say vandalized, by people replacing windows. It was the most beautiful Spanish home, Mission Spanish, whatever, that the people purchased, ripped off the tile roof, ripped out the beautiful arched windows, and plastered in the arch above, and put in straight, I don't know, metal windows, and then put in, took out the beautiful, huge door, and put in Home Depot doors that are, you know, two little doors, or whatever. I mean, I, I just didn't cry when I looked at that house. Now, I have known a house, yes, that was built in 1925, '26, has wooden windows, pain in the neck. You gotta paint them, you've gotta keep them up. So what, in 50 years, I maybe have done it three or four times. Not only do I have wooden windows, I have wooden screens. And those screens are painted a Kelly green. My house is a beige color, off-white, with brown trim, with the wooden beams on the front, and Kelly green screens. Everybody says, comments, now that has been the color scheme since I bought the house. And it does, it stands out. And I'm saying, if these metal windows or vinyl windows, there's another house on the corner of Chevy Chase and Boynton. Beautiful old house. It's almost 100 years old, it's from the tropical era, and, or maybe it's over 100 years. And they've torn out the windows, again, and put in metal, or whatever they put in. I mean, I wanted to cry, I just stood there and looked at it. It just totally changed the character of the house. And I do feel that if you live in an old area, as I do, and the homes, I'm very fortunate. The people in my area have all kept their homes virtually intact, without vinyl or windows, or whatever. And I don't know that I would make any savings on my fuel, but I wouldn't change my windows no matter how much I saved, because I would lose the charm and character of living in the home that I bought, and that was why I bought it, and in that area. But, and I do feel sad for people that don't, that do have to suffer from other people having already changed the windows from perhaps what would have been a much better solution of wooden windows, or whatever they were. So, but I am saying that I do feel that the D8, that, I'm sorry, that the motion 8D3 is the one that I would feel that if the council would support it. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Larry Barnes, followed by Andrea Humberger.
Good evening again. I'm Larry Barnes, President of the Chevy Chase Estates Association, and a resident of Glendale. Actually, I'm one of those people who unknowingly, probably 10 years ago, put in that nasty vinyl window. But I did use the wood framing, and we did actually get design awards for our home, so I guess not everybody thought that vinyl was a dirty word. What I would say is that in, in talking with our board, we are not aware of any of the neighborhood horror stories that were outlined here this evening regarding window replacement in, in the canyon. By the same token, you know, as a council, that indeed we stand for neighborhood compatibility. I think we, we support Motion Three as well. We do believe that indeed additional standards should be put into place, so that indeed we can maintain the compatibility of the neighborhood. But by the same token, we need to recognize individual cases. And it, this is reminiscent to me a little bit of, of the fence issue. It does come back down to a, to a house-by-house situation. And I think that we need to build into the process whereby Planning Department can work more judiciously and more efficiently with individual neighbors, or with individual homeowners and their individual situations within guidelines. I believe part of the problem, wherever you come down to in terms of the overall process and the guidelines, that communication to the community is paramount. Where we get into trouble as a city is that homeowners go out, cost window replacements, they talk to designers, they either listen to the state, the federal government, and I will tell you that the state of California does say that indeed vinyl windows, with dual-pane vinyl windows does save electricity. I was involved in that campaign for several years, so that is a true statement. But what we do is we need to notify the homeowners of what the standards are before they go into the planning process. Help them make the right decision. And if you help them make the right decision, giving them the adequate information upon which to evolve their project, I think that a lot of these horror stories can be eliminated. We can maintain neighborhood compatibility. We can, can maintain the integrity of the neighborhood. I do believe that there is a difference between a historical neighborhood and a non-historical neighborhood. Those could be approached within the context of, of individual properties evaluations, so that you don't have a one-size-fits-all standard. What bothers me is that indeed we project this image of Big Brother, telling the homeowner exactly what to do. So again, I think we would support Motion Three.
Thank you. Andrea Humberger, followed by Vic Martian.
I'm Andrea Humberger. I just want to say it's really cold in here, wow. I'm speaking on behalf of the Montrose Verdugo City Spar Heights Neighborhood Association. Since we formed our association in 1997, we have followed the design review process very closely, because we want to protect the character of our neighborhoods. We believe that windows are an important element of neighborhood character and integrity, so we support the new refined window replacement guidelines being developed by the planning staff, which we believe will strive to balance the need of the individual property owners to make changes to their homes, with the needs of our neighborhoods to protect their character. And we hope you'll support that too, so that- So that's motion three, I guess. Thank you.
Thank you. Vic Martian, followed by Peter Fwad.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council staff. My name is Vic Martian, 36-year resident of Glendale and current HWC commissioner. I'm here in support of the current process. After all, it was only a year ago we visited this item. As I stated before, that the key and most significant defining feature on a home is windows. The issue of vinyl window is not an acceptable solution. The city historical design guidelines dictate that vinyl windows is not an appropriate replacement solution. If you decide to tweak the ordinance to allow vinyl windows, please do so on case-by-case basis. In addition, window replacements should be consistent throughout the house. After all, this is a current DRB process of review for approval. Furthermore, if you decide to change, please let it be for homes that are not in the historical district. At this time, I want to also compliment staff for their hard work on this issue. In conclusion, I had the opportunity recently to apply for a window change out after the fact for a client for an apartment building. The key for the replacement was to keep the block frame, and that's how you get exempt. If you keep the frame, you keep the integrity of the architectural style. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Peter Fwad, followed by Ivan Insua.
Good evening. I'm Peter Fwad, president of the Northwest Glendale Homeowners Association. There's been a lot of talk about the cost, the energy efficiency, and the cost to maintain replacement windows, and I think that's sometimes used as a reason to allow the cheaper kinds of windows. I think the way to look at it is, and I don't think it's clear from what I've heard that that is even the case, but as compared to repair of the existing windows, I think it's been fairly clear that if you keep the existing wood windows, if they are wood, then it is ultimately cheaper, you can maintain them, and it's just as, if not more, energy efficient. So I think we need to look at it from a policy of not inconveniencing the homeowner from having the most expensive choice to replace the windows. I think we should say, one, replace the window. That should be the strong call. And I think at the counterstaff, at the counterdesk, people should be encouraged to repair and replace, and if it's legal and possible, maybe provide a list of vendors who could do that. And then if the homeowner chooses to still replace them, then I think it's, then that has become their choice to spend more. And if they're going to replace it, then I think we can insist on the better quality product. So far, for the most part in Glendale, cost has not been the driver of good design. Good design comes first, and then cost secondly. Most of the time, I don't think they're incompatible. I think you can get good design with lower costs, but I think if we look at it from the point of view of repairing a window versus replacing it, that might give the right perspective for this discussion. I just had my windows touched up and repainted three or four weeks ago, and it was affordable. And I'm happy I have the windows I have, and I curse the prior owner for having replaced the ones that he did. And what Mr. Barnes said, this is like the fence ordinance, my hair such as is stood on end, because it's just for that reason I think we shouldn't allow vinyl windows. I think it's a thin end of the wedge. And again, I think if the homeowner is elected to replace it, then they have to understand they have now gone to a higher level, and they can't do that, maybe fiberglass, maybe some of the other options. One other item is it always comes down to enforcement. In my neighborhood, northwest, there are a lot of vinyl windows have been put in with the false mulleons. You can't tell me they're all permitted, they must not have been. So I would also, as part of this whole process, please let's beef up the enforcement for people who are selling their home, so they don't run into these problems that we set tonight, and just in general terms. Thanks.
Thank you. Ivan Insua, followed by Myrna Stanley.
Good evening, mayor and council and staff. My name is Ivan Insua. I'm an architect, general contractor, LEED-accredited professional, a DRB member, and a homeowner. So I've been, I think I can pretty much talk about all those issues that are out there.
You're qualified.
I hope so. You know, and a homeowner with an accountant wife, so cost can also be talked about by me. Back in 2004, me, members of the DRB, planning staff, local architects and designers, contractors, members of homeowners associations, and probably a lot of homeowners at the time took a tour to see some of the various projects that were under construction, either under construction near the end or just constructed, either new construction, remodel. And overwhelmingly, one of the main issues that we found that is the most and key element of a good quality design are the windows. It was without question. We saw projects that did not utilize good quality windows commensurate to the quality of their architecture and the construction, and it stood out like a bad sore thumb. Perhaps Councilwoman Friedman was a DRB member who remembers that trip. Everybody agreed. So what do we do now? I think what we need to do now is do not unlike what we do in code. As an architect, builder, homeowner, general contractor, you have a responsibility to understand code when you're designing your home, either remodeling or new construction. Code is pretty clear. It says you can't do something or you can do something. Couple years ago, the city of Burbank and the city of Beverly Hills, I think, prohibited ROMEX in the new construction and remodeling of their projects. Everybody knew it, so that when you went into that city as an architect, builder, designer, real estate agent, homeowner, you knew that you could not go into the building department, pull a permit to pull construction or electrical permit and do ROMEX. That's, I think, what we need to do here. I think overwhelmingly, there is a quality of window that we do not believe is consistent, and that is the inexpensive vinyl windows. And for me particularly, are the vinyl windows where you do not have true divided lights. The ones where the glass is the whole sheet and it has an internal mullion to give the appearance of a divided light. Without question, one of the windows and many of the windows we see at design review board, when they are those type, design review board does not approve those, and those have been consistent since 2003. A problem I have when I read here that planning department wants to look at the adjacent neighborhood, the adjacent residences, and see if poor quality vinyl windows or what they've installed there actually is inconsistent with what would have been approved or not approved if you had gone through design review. Design review does not approve those type of windows. So even though you may say that the neighbors or the adjacent neighborhood has the primor -- I'm trying to speak quickly here in three minutes. The prominent windows are of the 60% to 7%, it still isn't something that can be approved because we're not approving them on DRB. So I think that that practice should be prohibited. Vinyl windows with the undivided light should not be approved. If you have a home that has those at this time, I think that that needs to be explored further. Maybe there needs to be a grace period, maybe when you do remodel, maybe when you do pull a permit, not unlike when you pull a permit for construction and the building inspector finds ROMEX, you've got to pull them out. So maybe that's the trigger. If you do a remodel of a significant amount and you've got the inexpensive vinyl windows, that may be the trigger, that you've got to pull them out and replace them. So that when you're doing that remodel and the architects and builders are working with staff, they already know that that's occurring. But if you create a benchmark that these windows are never going to be permitted, then everybody knows that, and there won't be the struggles with either the real estate agents, the homeowners. They know that one day they're going to have to change it. And in closing, there's a thing here that says, staff recommendation, providing sound, predictable design. Design cannot be predictable. Design is unpredictable. But the guidelines to create unpredictable designs are clear. No ROMEX, no vinyl windows without divided lights, then you design around that. I think that all the members of design review board in 2006, which I was a member of, gave pretty good, clear descriptions of what we wanted back then. I would recommend motion number three, plus the establishment of the other areas to further explore. Thank you.
Myrna Stanley. This is the final card.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. Myrna Stanley, president of Rodrigo Woodlands West Homeowners Association. I hope we've impressed on you all now the importance that we assign to windows in our residential neighborhoods. I think you get it. I understand that staff favors item three or option three. I guess we could go along with that with a very strong admonishment to staff that, boy, when any kind of vinyl window is proposed, that they really take a hard look at it. As I think they're doing on a case-by-case, but I'll tell you, I hear vinyl windows coming in, and it scares me to death. I just, the fiberglass-clad wood maybe, and probably in many situations. But I live in an older neighborhood that is not a historic district. Homes were built in the 20s and the early 30s, and I would hate to see vinyl windows go in those homes. That would, it's an abomination. So if I could make a recommendation, if staff has a project for window replacement and it's kind of iffy, could they not show that project to at least two of the DRB members and say, you know, what do you think of this? Because we're not real sure about this. And that way, maybe they would support staff and say, forget it, and then they could tell the applicant, there's no way you're going to go in with two strikes at this is if you want to insist on replacing these. Or maybe they would have some suggestions for the applicant. That way, the applicant wouldn't have to go through a full design review process if it's close and if it just needs some changes. So with that, take care of our neighborhoods, please. Thank you.
There was a final card. Mr. Weaver.
I'll go ahead and get my comments out of the way. I probably won't make that many people happy, and I'm sure that my colleagues won't be agreeing with me, but it's just how I feel. I too live in Glen Oaks Canyon. I've lived in Glen Oaks Canyon 70 years. My father built our Spanish house in 1938, Edwood Windows. I remember, as I got older, how they warped and hard to open, whatever. When I built my house in 1971, I spent a year researching everything that went into that house. And on the windows, I wanted something that would be easy maintenance, would work for a long period of time. I hunted all over, and I found Anderson window walls down in Orange County. Remember, we didn't have internet capability in those days. I had to send for brochures, and I had to read and study. So I got, what I've been now told is not vinyl windows. They're wood inside and they're vinyl outside. And they have a southern exposure, the main ones, vinyl, never had to be touched. Low maintenance, Spanish house with vinyl windows. So I'm not objective. I know there's all qualities of vinyl, but I paid an arm and leg for those vinyl, wood encased vinyl windows, whatever you want to call it. And the insides, yeah, I've been painted more than one time, because I want to match the color scheme inside the rooms. So when people say they don't like vinyl, well, I'm sorry, I'm not objective. I do. And they've come a long way since then. I do believe the block frame type you're talking about, yeah, if it's, the window is inset, then I think it ought to be codified that you do have to replace it, you can't come out flush when a house is designed that way. I think historical districts are an exception. Yeah, then you go right through what we've done, because it is a historic district. But if you're not in a historic district, why are we putting more burden on the homeowners? We over-regulate the homeowners now in so many ways. Setbacks, rooftops, style of this, style of that, landscaping, whatever. What rights does the homeowner have when we continue to put more and more constraints on? Frankly, when I'm driving down the street, I'm not looking sideways at windows in houses and saying, oh my God, look at that little hole, as I'm driving down. And if I'm walking in the neighborhood and I say, oh my goodness, look at that window, it just looks terrible. My property values are going down because they have these windows. I'm sorry, I don't buy any of that. Some people like to look and say, every house should look like it was 1930, 1940, 1950. I don't agree with that. In Glen Oaks Canyon, I watched any number of remodels going in, and they're beautiful. I don't hear from my homeowners group saying, oh my gosh, what is going on here? They put in a vinyl window where it used to be wood. Tell me, Mr. Hagani, if I wanted to go out and paint my house today red, white, and blue, could I do that? Yes or no?
We do not regulate the color of the house.
So I could paint my house any color, it would be totally unkeeping with the neighborhood. I know there's one up on mountain, I think it's purple, and I think there's a blue one. If they tried to come in today and do that, people be down here, our neighbor just painted their house purple or blue. So I could paint it red, white, and blue. But a window, oh my gosh, you're destroying the character of the neighborhood? You are dragging down the value of my property? Come on. That is not happening. I understand historic values, I've lived here all my life, but I think at some point in time, you've got to tell the homeowner you have a right to do what you want with your house within reason. Like I said, we regulate like crazy. Historic district, yeah, you've got additional things to worry about, because there you have to fit to the character of that area that has been deemed to be historical in general for the whole area. What's said about vinyl inserts? They don't make them. Yes, they do. Go check Anderson window walls. Last ones, and they snap them right in, and you can have a look any way you want. And they make specialty ones, too. But those aren't the cheap ones. They cost. But if you get down to vinyl windows, or any window, there's expensive and there's cheap. How do we codify? How do we say, okay, you can use vinyl if you use the expensive stuff? How are you going to do that? I've talked to staff how you can regulate that. It's pretty tough. But I'm of the opinion, most people buying homes today, or through foreclosure or whatever, they're coming in to houses that were built 30, 40, 50 years ago, they want to beautify those houses, enlarge those houses, and make them look beautiful. They put in all-new landscaping. They're doing a first-class job. They're not going to put in a cheap window. There's obviously exceptions. For the most part, they're going to go and put in a good window. I think staff has already overworked, and with all the additional problems with the vinyl windows, that's why it has to be put on the agenda, because I think it's just, it's getting too much. Now, my colleagues will probably say, we'll go with option three. If they do, I'll go with it. But philosophically, I just don't get it, because I am not going through the neighborhoods of Glendale, looking at the windows of houses and saying, oh my God, this whole area has been destroyed by those windows there. I don't know if any of you do that, maybe some of you do, but I'll bet the vast majority of the 207,000 people in this city do not. Sorry, Elaine and Margaret, some do, but I think the vast majority do not. That's just my opinion. So I'm sure my colleagues, especially ex-design review board members, will want to go with option three, and I'll go along. Thank you for allowing me to speak, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Ms. Friedman.
Well, I've been here for about three months. Cut 12 and a half million dollars out of our city budget. I think we had two or three people come and speak, talk about windows. We get lots of people. It all comes down to land use issues, you know, at the local level, local politics. What's more personal to people? What strikes closer to home, literally, than talking about your home and about your neighborhood? So they're not easy discussions, but they're really important discussions, and I think they're also healthy discussions to have as a community. You know, what do we want our community to be like? How much regulation? How little regulation do we want for our houses? Difficult things to decide on, but a really important part of local government. I was sitting here thinking about, you know, do we look at windows? And thinking about, just the other night, we were driving, my husband and I were driving to a friend's house, and we drove through San Marino and Pasadena, and we're driving through these neighborhoods that are just absolutely stupendously beautiful. And as we're driving south, you start to notice that the neighborhood's changing. And it's just, it's not as nice anymore. We're driving south towards San Gabriel and Alhambra. Something's changing about this neighborhood. What is it? It's not looking as good. And I realized it was the windows in a lot of cases. The windows were changed, and the materials on the houses were changed. Instead of having wood siding, now we're seeing a lot more stucco. Instead of the old wood windows, now it's vinyl windows. Houses that had been, these majestic old houses, have been altered over the years, downgraded. The neighborhood was downgraded from these small changes. Yes, I was on design review board for five years.
I don't know.
And one of the things I learned was that the fenestration, the windows of a house are one of the most important architectural elements of a house. They really are like the eyes on a person, they're the windows into that, the windows to the soul. And you can have a same house with the same shape, but when you start to change some of these details, the windows, some of the materials on the house, that's what really makes the big change in the house. The quality of the house, how it looks, how it reads to the street. If we're going to have design review at all, we have to think about the windows, because they are the most important element. If we're not going to have some regulation over the windows, we might as well not have design review. Because by changing a window, you change the entire style of a house. So if we're not going to have control over that, we might as well just stop the design review process. Because at that point, we're not doing any good, if we're not going to control or have some say in what's done with those windows. It's really the most important element. And I do believe in the design review process. I think that it's resulted in better remodels in the city and better new construction. And just looking at the houses that were built in the 70s and 80s and comparing them to now, I don't think there's any question. I'm glad that Mr. Insua came. I was on that same tour with him, and it was really obvious. And what was astounding to everybody on that tour was that here are houses that were being built to sell for a million dollars, million and a half dollars. But sometimes the builders would cut corners. They wanted to save a little money, so they put on the cheaper windows. And I can tell you, if I was a homeowner and I was looking, I wouldn't want to look at those windows. And I remember at those houses, and I remember when I was looking for a house, that sometimes going to see these houses that had been remodeled, we wouldn't even go inside. We just would ask our agent to take us somewhere else, because it made that much of a difference. And I think if you ask real estate agents, they'll tell you that, that these things really do matter. That the craftsman houses that have been stuccoed over, or have had their windows replaced with vinyl, don't command the money. And certainly the neighborhoods where a lot of that's happened, the neighborhoods have been downgraded. And that's why people come out. They come out not for their own house, because they know what they're going to do to their house. I'm sure that Mr. LaCascio has no intention of replacing his windows with vinyl, but why is he here? He's here because he's concerned about the houses around him, because he knows that if those start to change, it downgrades the value of his property, because it downgrades the neighborhood. And that's why it is appropriate for council to have this discussion, and it's appropriate for the city to have a say in the windows. So, I just took some notes as I went through. One of the things that I read in the staff report that I thought was very interesting, I'm going to read it. Says, "With regard to energy efficiency, a number of replacement windows have comparable ratings as vinyl, including wood, aluminum clad wood, and fiberglass." So the energy argument doesn't really hold so much merit, because there are alternatives that are just as energy efficient. I would also argue that there's nothing green about manufacturing plastic windows, or about what happens to those windows when they end up in landfills later. They continue, "While staff cannot conduct a design review based on a project's cost, the experience of most applicants suggests that there are numerous affordable, energy-efficient, non-vine window replacement solutions available to the public." So it's not as though vinyl is the only material that can be affordable. We've heard that fixing windows can be affordable. We did that with our own house. We have old windows, we were able to have them fixed. It's not always an option, but there are other materials that are equally affordable. Fiberglass costs are coming down, you know, there's other materials. And when you get to the vinyl windows that are the better quality windows, the costs start to become equivalent. So really, when we're talking about the lower-cost vinyl windows, they are really the cheapest windows, the ones that you see that are sort of flush-mounted, that I don't think anyone would look at and think that this is a good alternative to have on a quality house. And my feeling is your house is this huge investment. You're paying $500, $600, $700,000 and up. Why would you want to even risk downgrading the value of your property by taking the most important architectural element of your house and putting in the cheapest window that you can? I don't understand the rationale. But even if you do want to save money, the staff report says there are other alternatives that are just as, or very close to the same price. So I don't really believe the affordability part. Now, in terms of when the vinyl's appropriate, staff's already said that they have been allowing vinyl windows in many instances, when it's appropriate to the style, when the quality is high enough. So I don't think that they're telling everybody that they have to use wood. Yes, there's a process, but there's a process for a lot of things. There's a process when you change the architectural style of your house. There's a process when you want to do an addition. Lots of things in this city require a process, because these are important changes, and they do affect your neighbors. So it sounds like what the staff wants to do is to come up with some guidelines to make it easier for the public to understand what's acceptable and what's not, so that they have some more freedom to exempt certain types of windows. And I understand that, you know, there's a certain point where you do become kind of, you know, big brother, and we don't want that either. And that's why I think that staff is really trying to make an effort to come up with these alternatives that are compromises that everyone can live with. They showed those block, I think it was block construction, or block something or other windows, that look like wood windows, that look like wood, but they're vinyl set into the wood. I think that's a good middle ground. And that's something that staff's offering as a way that you can get your vinyl windows, but still have a look that retains the architectural style of your house, that's not fighting against it. So I do think that there's a good faith effort to work with the homeowners and to come up with something that they can live with, and that the neighbors can live with. So I encourage them to continue that. And I have worked long enough with the planning department to know that they understand kind of what would be acceptable in front of the design review board, and that they're not shy when they're not sure about letting applicants go in front of a board that's made up of five neighbors, five people in the community that are trained and can help make those decisions. So I think that that's a good kind of middle ground, that you have staff that can give some exemptions, you have the design review board to go if you feel that you're not getting a fair hearing and you want to make your case to somebody else. I think that's a good process. So I'll just go down some of the comments that I heard different members of the public make, and I'll give you my response. One, a couple people have said that they would like to see a policy that discourages vinyl window replacements, or window replacements citywide, except with like materials. I would generally agree. I think if we can't come up with incentives, we had talked at one point about other cities. I was told about one city that will not let you, that not make you pay any fee or any permitting to replace with in-kind. So I think that's something we should look at. That would encourage people, that if you have wood and you're going to replace with wood, you don't have to pay anything. You don't have to get a permit, or maybe you get a permit over the counter without having to pay any kind of fee, and it's a very easy process. So that would encourage people to do that. So I would not want to see the staff be so, have so much discretion that they start to allow things that the design review boards wouldn't allow. I don't think that it's fair to people that are going in front of the boards to be held to one level while other people have a lower level. We need to be sure that whatever the design review boards feel is appropriate, that that's what everybody who comes in, and the staff understands that, too, so that it's not the case that people over the counter are being given permission for things that the boards wouldn't allow them to have. That happened in the past, it was always a problem for the design review boards. We need to be sure that doesn't happen in the future. I also agree that we need to have a zero tolerance policy towards illegal swap-outs. It's not fair that some people go through the system, like the collards, and they're having to go through all of these hoops, and then someone else will just do it illegally and game the system, and nothing happens to them. So I think that we do have to pursue these illegal swap-outs. Now whether we do a grace period for people who inherit something that happened long ago, that I don't know. I'm certainly willing to have that discussion. People who buy something recently and find out that something had been done illegally, I sympathize, but there's only so much of that you can do. I mean, I know that that happens. People are going to put something on the market, they do a bunch of fast changes, they don't get permits, but how far do we go in sort of exempting that? I mean, if someone adds 5,000 square feet to the back of their house, just because someone bought it not realizing that was illegal, that doesn't really give much recourse to the neighbors or the neighborhood. So I think we need to be very careful about saying that just because someone bought something without knowing, or a salesman told them that it was allowed and it really wasn't. People have to take responsibility, too, for their property when they buy it, or when someone, when a contractor tells them what they can and can't do. They have to understand that they need to double-check these things before they get themselves into that situation. I do agree we need to provide resources. We need to find people who do repairs on wood windows, be able to provide those resources to people, provide information, like when you develop the guidelines of what's permitted, what's not permitted. Showing people visual aids really helps. We don't want this, we do want this. Make it very clear and very easy. If we can get Home Depot to put that out, that would be great. I doubt they'll do it. It would be a nice gesture if they did. Communicate better with the residents, absolutely. Whatever we can run on GTV6, whatever we can do in terms of materials to hand out so that people understand all of these issues, I think that that would be good. Definitely, we need to get GWP on board, so that they're not giving different information to people than planning is. I don't know who to give that direction to. I don't, no one from GWP is here, but Mr. Starbuck's raising his hand, so we need to definitely be sure that they're on board and that they understand kind of the city policy about this. Should there be a difference in historic districts than from the rest of the city? I don't think so. We've only had historic districts for a few months. We have no idea in five years what's going to be a district and what's not. And also, just because your neighborhood is not a historic district, doesn't mean it doesn't have value. And I still believe that doing a lot of these replacements downgrade your neighborhood, whether it's historic or it's a newer neighborhood. And that's not fair to the people who live around you. So I think in general, that the position that the city's always taken, and the reason we have the design review board, is because, yes, you have authority over what you can do to your house, but you also, we discourage people from downgrading their property through changes, and by extension, downgrading the area. So that's why it's important for the city to be sure that all of our neighborhoods are kept up in terms of cleanliness, landscaping, all of those things. In Glendale, we've always said, we expect a certain level in our neighborhoods, and this fits right in with that philosophy. So I think for now, that's all that I have to say. I'm fine with either, one, the status quo, or three, having these new guidelines and amending it to allow some more discretion. I think that the staff has done a lot of good work in terms of looking at the materials that are out there, and looking at the different products, and saying, these types of vinyl windows are acceptable, and hopefully, we can find some for the people who want vinyl that you can live with, that the staff can exempt over the counter, so you don't have to go through the whole DRB process. That would be my goal in this. So I do believe that staff can find that middle ground, give people some discretion, but also give protection to the neighborhoods.
Mr. Weaver.
Yeah, I just want to clarify, Ms. Friedman, she talked about remodel. To me, if you're remodeling a house, you're remodeling more than just the window. If you're remodeling, you're caught, because you're going to be doing, in a remodel, you're going to be maybe tearing down 49% of the house or whatever. You're going to catch the windows along with the rest. But if you're just exchanging a window out, I see that as being different. All I know is, over the years, frustration I've heard from staff with customers at the counter screaming and yelling at them because of regulations they don't understand. I feel for the ones that have bought a house that somebody else did, and we're going to hold them responsible. You do, you do diligence when you're buying, you do termite inspections, you do this inspection and that. And now, you're going to say, well, they also have to know if the windows are okay. Where do you draw the line on what they have to check to find out whether the city is illegal or illegal for anything in the house? I just hope, if we go down the road with three, that staff can find a way to make it a little easier on themselves to placate the customers coming to the counter and screaming. I'm sure Elaine had the same problems, she was the planning director, with people coming into the counter screaming, yelling. Maybe not, but that's what I'm hearing is occurring now. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Turner-Jerry.
Yes, I have some comments. I think there's a lot that's unfair currently, in the current situation. I think what's very unfair is someone who buys a house, who has no notice from either the seller or the city, that he's got a window that was replaced with an inappropriate type of window. And to put the burden on him to change out that window immediately, or to bring criminal charges against him, is completely unfair. I think what's unfair is someone like Ms. Clark, who wants to put in a certain type of window, and who goes down the street, and many, many of the other homes on that street have the exact same type of window that she's thinking of putting in, but you're telling her, no, you can't do that. I think what's unfair is all these other homes that are, for some reason, escaping prosecution on this. Because why? Because why? Because no one has picked up the phone and said, well, here, exhibit, the exhibit that Ms. Clark said, why don't we then, if we're serious about this, go to each and every one of those homes on East Glen Oaks Boulevard, East Glen Oaks Avenue, and commence proceedings against them? Because that's what we're, that's what we're saying. Is this what we're going to do? Are we ready to do that? If we are, then as a corollary to this ordinance, I think we need to devise a system and a plan where systematically, we go throughout the entire city, look at everyone's window and see if the window was changed out inappropriately. I'm not saying vinyl, I understand there's differences between vinyl and some other types of material are also inoffensive, and commence prosecution against them. Because not to do that would be unfair. That would be selective prosecution, and that's exactly what we're doing here. If we're serious about all this, then that's what we should be doing. The problem is, you've got hundreds, if not thousands, of homes with this same problem. Mr. Varnes talked about it being similar to a fence, the fence ordinance, and in a sense it is. It's similar in the sense that there are so many homes that are in violation. And to commence a fair and systematic prosecution would completely overload not only our planning staff, our city attorney's office, and perhaps the court system across the street. So we have to be very careful about what we're saying and what we're doing. That just isn't fair. We have to be fair. We have to talk about how we're going to proceed with this thing. What I think is unfair is two houses, one, let's say, a Mills Act house, one, a non-Mills Act home, who are under the exact same restrictions when it comes to changing out windows. What's unfair is a home outside of a historic district and another one inside a historic district that are under the same restrictions when it comes to changing out windows. I don't think that should be our intent here. There are many, many things. It seems that the critical issue here is that changing out the windows leads to a, what's the, what's the catchphrase there? A denigration of the neighborhood, or a devaluation of the, I think Mr. Platt mentioned, what your, what your standard is. How many other things can we think about that cause a diminishment of value of a neighborhood? Mr. Weaver talked about one.
It's just.
Crazy. I'm sorry?
Fences.
Fences. Crazy colors. Parking a camper in front of your house, parking vehicles in front of your house on a roadway on a continual basis. Leaving junk in the front yard. Using inferior wood products for your front porch. Using inferior roofing products. Using an inferior type of paint that is either too glossy, or too flat, or whatever. Using inferior faucets, and sinks, and front door, and hardware. This is a long road. This is a long slope that I think we're slipping down. I mean, I don't think you would disagree that those are items which certainly lead to the devaluation. And there are many others. I'm just thinking here off the top of my head. Type of driveway. A type of mailbox. A type of window coverings. Type of brickwork. Many, many things. Are we going to go and regulate each one of those because they could potentially devalue a neighborhood? Even if windows are the number one, claim to be the number one devaluating factor, certainly there's a number two and a number three, whatever those are, why don't we go after that? And they're not all subject to design review. So I don't know how you're going to, how we can really deal with this. How about garage doors? I mean, these are all things that can go inappropriate garage door design. I don't think the whole city should be a historic district. I think historic districts, we've got a set procedure for those. It has worked out. We have three that have applied. We've got several others in the works. We can't make the whole city a historic district. I mean, let's talk about. I mean, let's talk about this. Should we give amnesty to all these other vinyl windows, all these other owners that either bought a home with improper windows or installed them at some point before the statute of limitations? Isn't there a statute of limitations for improper window installation?
Based upon the language of our code, for every day that you maintain it, it's unlawful.
Okay, it's a new day.
Just a new day.
So there's essentially no statute of limitation. Let's be serious about this. There are going to be thousands of homes that are not in compliance. Are we going to go after each one of these other homes? Because I think we're going to have a huge problem if we do. We need to figure out how we're going to deal with that. If you're going to give an amnesty, let's give an amnesty. And look, going forward, on a going-forward basis, and maybe require homes to have noticed if you find an illegal window, put a notice to the owner that upon sale, it must be changed back. There's many things we can do. But, I mean, Mr. Ghani, what are you going to do? Let's say we pass this. Whatever version we take, either number one, we keep option one, keep the current standard, or go to number three and say, we're going to go to design review. Some person who's against this whole process, in property rights defender, comes to you with a stack of pictures and addresses and say, go to it. I demand that you pursue these cases as zealously as you pursue every other case, the ones that you have before you. It's going to be a nightmare for you, and it's not going to be doable. So therein lies the problem that we have. I would like a discussion as to how we're going to deal with that. I'm ready to go to number three, let the DRB have it, but unless we can devise a plan and a method to make everyone legit, it's not fair to go after the handful of fish that we've already caught in the nets.
I'm sorry, I really don't understand what you're asking, because I thought we were here about something that we already have, we have a permitting process for many things, for adding square footage, for changing your plumbing, I mean, changing your roof requires a permit. We're talking about what we will allow under the permitting process that we already have in place. What people do illegally and what we do about that is a completely separate issue, first of all. And secondly, no one's been talking about going back to things that were permitted in the past. I mean, there were a lot of buildings, most, I'd say 90% of the buildings in Glendale were built before there was design review. No one's saying, let's go back and now make those go to today's design review, in the same way that a lot of buildings were built without conforming side setbacks. We're not talking about going back to revisit vinyl windows that were permitted a long time ago, or even, we're not even talking about the ones that are there that maybe were done illegally 10 years ago. We're talking about right now, when someone goes in and asks for a permit to replace their windows. We're also talking about things that are done on Sundays, right now, illegally, knowingly by the owners, and what recourse we're going to have. That's completely different from looking at the majority of the vinyl windows in the city. We're looking at what we're doing now, going forward, and trying to come up with a process that gives the public some understanding of what's allowed, as well as the neighborhoods. And lots of people from the homeowners' associations have been here saying that they believe that this hurts their neighborhoods, and so do their members. So that's what I'm interested in, how we can give some certainty to people, give staff some direction for what we want to allow and what we don't want to allow. I'm not interested in taking on code violators right now. We have a process for people who build without permit, whether it's adding square footage, putting in windows illegally or et cetera. That's not the issue tonight. The issue is, what do we want to allow, and what do we want to encourage, and what direction are we giving staff?
No, we aren't just looking forward, we are looking backwards. There's a bunch of cases, and we should have all received notices on a couple individuals who buy homes with windows that were either changed out with a permit, a wrong window installed contrary to the permit, or without a permit, and we're going after these people. And these people are looking down the street and saying, here's a window that doesn't conform, here's a window that doesn't conform, the exact same type of window, and we're going after them. And we're going after them and prosecuting them and telling them they better change it out immediately, or we're going to commence criminal prosecution.
Well, let me say something on that issue. For the recent home buyer, a real estate agent has to disclose what is material to the purchase of the property that they've listed and sold. So a new homeowner can go against their agent, or more specifically, can go against the listing agent. Those people who buy their homes in foreclosure, unfortunately, their options are somewhat limited. But in a normal real estate transaction, the buyer will be able to go after the listing agent and after the homeowner that sold the property. Mr. Weaver?
When you mention things like plumbing, electrical, that's codified. That's easy to do. I've talked to Mr. Ghani, you can't codify a window product. It's totally different.
That's why we have design review.
I know, which is subjective, very subjective. Now, Mr. Najarian knows, we've had the condominium situation, conversions, and we put a sunset date, anything after a certain date, couldn't do it without going through a certain process. Fences, we said, on fences, we grandfathered those in from a certain date. We said, okay, anybody's had one before, those fences can stay. But if they tear that fence down, then they must put one up according to code in the proper location. Is that correct?
That's the original ordinance that's in the books, and you've also given us direction to look at different neighborhoods based on fences.
Right, so the same thing here. So all the neighborhood has illegal windows, you want to say it, grandfathered. But if in the future, any homeowner comes in and wants to replace those windows, that's all different ballgame.
Well, that's a potential solution to the problem that I see.
That's a potential way, what you've been coming up with.
Mr. Drayman?
Wow.
Oh, comment, eh?
Well, first of all, I'm almost speechless, which...
You have been so far.
Not quite, but almost. Let me compliment my colleagues on some terrifically interesting debate, and I don't mean that in a sarcastic way. Mr. Weaver and Ms. Friedman and Councilmember Najarian, very good points.
Much more.
By the way, I just wanted to remind my colleagues who are here tonight, saying, my goodness, now we're expecting, we're expecting homeowners to go and come to the city and see what permits have been pulled on their properties and what haven't, and what parts of their homes are legal and what are not. And I just want to remind you of two words, Paul Dutton.
Oh, yeah.
You know, because I was in the minority on that vote, along with Mr. Quintero, on a property where, aside from some things where, granted, they should have not gone, such as installing a new tempered glass slider in their family room, but there was a case where several owners prior hadn't pulled a permit on a foundation, hadn't completed a permit on a foundation from back in the late '50s, they bought the property in the '70s, and it was never disclosed to them by anybody. And this council said, they should have known, had they gone down to the city and checked it out, they would have known. Anyway, it's interesting that that same argument is being applied tonight, but flipping it around on its head. Anyhow, that aside, let me ask a couple of questions, because by the way, we have guests here tonight from up in the, what do we call it, the far north part of Glendale. And I don't know if they see what I see on the weekends very often in the neighborhood, and that is trucks driving around with windows in the back, because it's usually on a Sunday. And I don't know whether they're headed to the unincorporated part of Locker Center or the incorporated part of Locker Center, but you can almost, you know, you can almost count them, you know, oh, there's another one, there's another one, there's another one. So there's some little cottage enterprise going on in our city that relates to windows. Let me ask, Mr. Ghani, how many permits do we process per year for window replacements?
We know that over the last 10 months, we did process about more than 600 exemptions, and of those exemptions, about, would you say, about one-third?
Ten to 20.
10 to 20 a week, window exemption inquiries. Not every one of them is actually one that we process, but inquiries. 10 to 20 window exemptions, inquiries on window exemptions we get about every week.
Okay, but would that include all, do we have a number on how many permits we actually process? Not inquiries, not phone calls?
No, no, we do not have the actual number of the exact exemptions we gave for windows. We could not separate that from our data, because our data just shows exemptions.
Well, you're also having exemptions. I'm talking about people who are going through a process and...
Yes, well, except that they would fall under the exemptions process in the planning department process.
All right, so you're comfortable with that number. And out of that, how many end up being sort of caught up in this major web that the Clarks and the Collards and others we hear about from time to time?
I think...
Because, let me just say why I'm asking, because their cases really stand out to this council member, because they, you know, because I don't hear that constantly, so how many?
I think over the time that I have been in this position, we've had about half a dozen, about the half a dozen of these cases that have grown to be super problematic. That is not to say that only half a dozen people have complained about the process, but about half a dozen of them have gotten into, stuck in the process where no resolution has come forward very fast.
Okay, so we're comfortable with saying, in your estimation, Mr. Ghani, that it is a vast minority?
I would think so.
Okay, all right. Here's some of the problems I have, and I'm not trying to telegraph where I'm going, I'll tell you where I'm going in a minute, but here's part of the problem. I hear citizens here talking about getting stuck with these various problems, and I'm listening to this convoluted scenario of how their experience with the city has unfolded. And city staff is saying, and I noted it down during the initial presentation, this was the quote, "We're getting very close to a workable set of guidelines." And that's a problem for me. I'm glad we're getting very close, but while we're getting close, we have citizens that are caught in a major problem, a major bind, that is, you can tell, listening to them and reading their chronology of events, that it is an extremely frustrating problem while we are getting close to a workable set of guidelines. I'm concerned about what we're saying to the people that are in that pipeline and having difficulties, such as what we've heard this evening. And we've heard a lot of theory also tonight, and I'm always interested in that, because what you become very, and I've been on that side of the dais for years and years, and it is very difficult on this side of the dais when you don't have the luxury sometimes of dealing with policymaking in the way of theory, and you have real-life, flesh and blood people that are caught in a problem. In the area where I grew up, a lot of the homes were built by your friend, Mr. Ganji, or his family, by Webster Wiley and his family. It's very sad to drive around that area and see Ganji buy Sears Roebuck and Webster Wiley buy Home Depot, because they've taken out major components of the house, and windows are major components of the house, and they've shoved something in there that you can just go down the street, oh, Sears, Montgomery Ward's, Home Depot, Lowe's. It does ruin the neighborhood. I don't know how you slice it or dice it any other way. There are reasons people select certain neighborhoods to live in, you know? And even people that, as you say, Mr. Weaver, look out the window and they don't go, ooh, look at that window, they do get a general sense of what are nicer neighborhoods and what are not. And there's a lot of things that we maybe take for granted in parts of our own city or in other cities that we look at and say, gosh, it must be a rodeo there, because look at the, just, you know, I'm sorry, but not every city and not every neighborhood looks alike. They're not equally well-kept. I agree with some of your comments, Mr. Weaver, however, however...
I know what was coming.
If we didn't have some of those regulations that you talk about that are so intrusive and big brotherish, we also probably wouldn't be able to have the historic districts that you also say you love.
True.
Because we would have lost the historic integrity of those homes, the historic attributes of those homes. Well, I'll be supporting option three on this. Having said that, I would like to ask for my colleagues, because I'm hearing it from the three of my colleagues who have spoken thus far, so I'm going to join this part of it. And I hope that we can all support this aspect of it, no matter how the vote comes out. I'm going to support option three, but I think we should do some very extensive and special hand-holding for people like the Collards and the Clarks. We need to stop the dysfunction of this cold, stop, take a step back and say, what can we do to get them through this process? And I mean, we need to do this now. That's my particular view. That's, to me, a separate issue apart from where we're going in the future. They're in the pipeline now, and I think we need to, I think we need to help cut through some of the, what I think for them is frustrating encounter with their local government, whatever that takes. And I am hearing that in one way or another from my colleagues that have spoken so far. Anyway, I'm hoping that's what I'm hearing. Those are my comments, Mr. Mayor. I'll be supporting option three.
Okay. I'll limit my comments, it's 9:30. I agree with Ms. Friedman, so, Mr. Ghani, you can, whatever she said, put a ditto behind those comments. Now, just some general, and I also agree with Mr. Drayman in the sense that both the Collards and the Clarks, we need to come to a resolution that makes some sense for them. I happen to know what the Collards' house looks like, and I know whatever they're trying to do, I think they're trying to maintain the integrity of the house and try to, it's a beautiful street and a beautiful home, so I don't know what it is that they're trying to do, but I would assume that whatever they're attempting to do, they're doing what they feel is right for their house and neighborhood. But just in general, let me once again reiterate, when you buy a foreclosure, you take your chances. I mean, that's the reality of that market. And unlike buying through a buyer, or rather, a seller, who you have a recourse against that person and the real estate agent, if an agent was involved, you have recourse to get back every cent that you lose, and they obviously did not disclose something that is pertinent to the sale of the property. I mean, that's the way it works with foreclosures. It's a totally different story, I suppose. Legally, you may be able to go after the bank, but I doubt it. But to the general proposition of what these windows are like, I mean, in my opinion, stucco and windows kill more neighborhoods in Southern California than anything else. I mean, it's just beyond comprehension. Over the years, I came to Glendale in the mid-'70s, and over the years, the southern portion of the city, between the large apartments and condo buildings, Soviet-style design on both of them, and the stucco and the sliding glass windows, I mean, they just killed the city. There were incredibly nice streets, very nice neighborhoods, that over a period of years, just killed them. And there were a couple of, for instance, there, that blue stuccoed little cottage that we saw. So it is very important, and I am one of the people, and when I drive through neighborhoods, I like architecture, and you can immediately see when a neighborhood sort of starts a downward trend by the overwhelming presence of the sliding glass windows and, of course, the stucco. And we are not going down that road in Glendale. I mean, this city council has decided long ago that we don't want to continue what was done in most of the '70s and right into the '80s. We don't want to do that anymore. We want to go in a different direction. So this is just part of that same effort. And by the way, in defense of the Bob Hope Airport and all of the things that the airport does, that's a different situation. We don't do it in Glendale, we do it in Burbank, North Hollywood. I mean, those homes and those neighborhoods are so affected... Hollywood. I mean, those homes and those neighborhoods are so affected by jet aircraft taking off and landing, I mean, that they're literally just compressing, trying to keep all sound out, right down to air conditioning. Not only do we do windows and doors and insulation in the attic, I mean, we literally put in air conditioning units so that they can not open the windows. So it's a little different story. But here in Glendale, we're looking at something different for our, for our neighborhoods. And then let me just say that I do agree with DRB member, Nsuah, when he mentioned that one of the ways to, to sort of work with those existing homes and maybe even smaller rental units, duplexes and triplexes, is basically when those properties come in for permits, that's when it's going to trigger a change in the status of the, of the windows. But all in all, I'm in total support of the third option, and I do have the feeling that we can leave some discretion to the staff. I think they do a good job. I think people are being sort of, well, they're not understanding when they see the title, Mr. Platt's title of historic districting supervisor. What's the title again?
Preservation.
Preservation, sorry. I think they are sort of thrown by that because I've gotten a lot of emails, you know, specifically saying, "Wait a minute, how come the historic preservation guy is, is, you know, dealing with me on windows?" But at any rate, I think the staff can, they, they're professionals. There should be some discretion there. And I do agree that the muttons should be external in terms of the grids. And then the Z bars, let's take a look at it and see what, what's out there in the market. I'm familiar with that particular apartment building. Next time I drive by, I know they, I noticed that they did a total kind of remodel, but I'll drive by the next time to look it over so we can, we can sort of take a look at the Z bars.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Mayor?
Okay, so those are my comments. Ms. Friedman has a question and Mr. Weaver.
I agree about the muttons, so I would agree with the staff recommendation to just ban them. But I don't quite understand the difference between one and three. Maybe you can explain that because it seemed, I'm not sure whether one is the current process with the new guidelines as you develop them, or if three was you wanting us to come back with a completely different direction.
The difference between one and three, the one, it would be the current process as it, as we have been doing this. Three would be the current process plus the added benefit of the information we have gathered over the last couple of years, that we would be then revisiting that perhaps with the DRB and then back to you to, to then come up with additional guidelines for window replacements based on the information gathered so far. So three would be that added step that we would, we would recommend.
That's fine with me. I just, as I said before, I want to reiterate, and I want to be sure that what staff does over the counter is not more permissible than what the DRB would allow, because I don't think that's fair for people that are going in front of the DRB. So you need to, I think, get very clear guidance from them. But in general, the direction I've seen the planning staff going in the last year is the direction I would like to see it continue.
Mr. Weaver?
I'm going to go along with three. As I tried to say, my position on exempting was more philosophical nature than anything, and I figured we would be going with three. I'll pray that when it's eventually done, that this does help not only the staff, but the public that comes in. I pray that that happens. And this will be back to us at least once or twice more. Only thing I'd like to ask if my staff would at least consider talking about grandfathering, asked once, as Mr. Najarian says, were you at the line? We didn't fancy, I'm not saying adopt it, but at least have a little more discussion on, does that make sense? That's the only thing I'd ask.
Mr. Drayman?
Well, what about...
Same here.
But...
I know where I'll be going in the debate, but let's talk about it.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, there are a number of issues that have been raised lately. Just to give clarification, number one, the existing windows that have been replaced without permits is, the planning staff only steps in when somebody comes to the counter for a permit, whether they are doing this on their own volition or they've received a citation from Neighborhood Services for having, having property where windows have been changed without permits. So that's the point where planning staff steps in. We do not go out there and fish out buildings that have had window replacements and say, "Come here and get a planning permit." So if you would like to include a discussion to deal with existing properties where window replacements have occurred without permits, then Neighborhood Services should be involved in that discussion, and we would recommend that. The second part, Councilman Najarian raised a number of other types of issues that, that should be discussed. And I must say that our exemption review process actually addresses many of those, those particular items that you, you said not all of them, but some of them. And that's, that's really their role. Staff right now understands our role to be that we review something to see if it should go to DRB or if we could approve something over the counter by staff. So that's the second piece. The third piece, something was raised by a member of the public about having checked planning files and they didn't see anything. What that means is that they found that there was no permit issued for window replacement. That means the windows were probably issued without permits. That's usually the case. And I just wanted that to be clear for the public in case they encounter a situation like that in the future.
Mr. Mayor, I could just ask, about, Mr. Hagani, when it comes back now, will it come back in the form of a draft ordinance or will it come back in more of a discussion mode again, based on the information we've...
When we come back again, we'll come back with a draft, windows, window replacement guidelines, review guidelines, that will be more clarified, and we'll bring that for your attention to review. And if that's okay with you, we will then go ahead and implement that. And we apologize that we're coming close to it, that as opposed to having had it right from the start, part of it has to do with our experience and we have to learn from our experience.
So it doesn't go into an ordinance form, it just goes into a...
It would fit in our current process, in the exemption process.
Mr. Najarian and Mr. Drayman?
Part of what I heard you discuss, Mr. Mayor and Mr. Drayman, was what to do with the individuals who were caught in the current conundrum. And you mentioned the Clarks and Mrs. Collard, but I know that there's more like them out there. These two folks had the extra time and the patience to come to the city council meeting and address their concerns to us directly. So if we're going to do something, let's, it's more than two, Hassan, I know it's a dozen maybe, I mean, I'm just guessing. You know, I only get the emails, and I know I've gotten probably about three other cases with sort of this type of problem, varying, varying versions of this, of this problem. But if we're going to seek to craft some remedy for them, let's include all these people and bring it back to us for, for a discussion and some sort of resolution.
Mr. Drayman?
Mr. Najarian, if I didn't make myself clear, I apologize. That is exactly what I'm talking about. That's why I asked, Mr. Hagani, how many of these deals do we permit per year? How many exemptions are there? How many people, basically, are we finding are ending up in this, this situation? And the answer was, in that case, about a half dozen to a dozen. So that's exactly why, even though I, you know, I'm not saying that I'm going to change my view, I am agreeing with Mr. Weaver that we should have that debate on what we do about existing problems and so on. And this, this is another thing that we should discuss.
And if there's only six, maybe they can come directly to council?
There may be more.
Give us some options.
There may be more now.
We'll give you some options.
Give us some options so we can, we can deal with that.
But don't wish for that. But in any case, that, that is exactly why I would endorse a little more debate on that.
Okay. Do we need a motion for you, Mr. Hagani, or...
It says, "Based process as specified." Is that by specified as we've spoken?
The motion would be as specified as spoken, and as spoken would be to come back with a set of, a draft set of guidelines for council review. I would say, I know Jay said August 18, but I would say September because I will not be here on August 18, and I would not want to miss that discussion. So sometimes by September, we'll bring back to you a set of guidelines. And in addition to that, we will include a proposal on how to deal with projects that are stuck in the middle, or pipeline projects, or projects where there is no resolution for them at this point.
Let me, let me be really clear with what I had in mind. That's fine, and that's great. But I'm also saying, they're here, they're, I don't mean here, just here tonight. These, these kinds of cases exist right now. I think we, we should be asking staff to really make the extra effort to try to clarify whatever hasn't been clarified, to clear up any misconceptions between what GWP might be telling them or have heard, what unscrupulous salespeople in the community might have told them, what, what we're saying, and, and really make that effort now to try to get them through this process.
Wait two months.
As opposed to trying to deal with it at some point when this ordinance goes forward. That's a different issue to me.
Mr. Mayor, if the direction is to the outstanding cases, the direction is for us to, within the framework of the direction you gave us, which is work within these guidelines, we can look at those and see if we can give them a clearer direction in terms of the process with the Planning Department. If there are competing directions between GWP and planning, we can, we can take that direction and as of tomorrow, pay attention to that and come to, bring GWP staff into the discussion, see if we can resolve that more quickly. If that, those are the directions, we could do that. However, if the direction is outside the guidelines that you gave us, right, tonight, I do, we would need a little bit more specific direction.
Can I be real specific? Pick up the telephone.
Ms. Friedman?
Pick up the telephone. Let's call these people. Let's get them in and say, "Where do we have some common ground? What don't we understand? What can we move forward on? What can we cure? What can we not cure? Here's where we can't move. Here's where we can." And just make the effort, and I don't just mean with the, the two people that are here, but with whatever the outstanding ones are. I'm hearing there are not that many.
We could do that.
And to me, that's separate and completely apart from whatever we're doing with an ordinance.
Yeah, I agree. I think without us knowing the particulars of each case, it's very hard to give any real direction because I know from working on Design Review Board that some of these cases are simply someone saying, "This is the product I want to use because it's the cheapest, and therefore I have a problem." So I don't think the direction's to say, "Just make all those go away by permitting them." It's, if there's a miscommunication, let's solve that, but, but not the previous.
Okay, Ms. Hagani.
Do you need a motion to that effect?
We don't need a motion. I think you have the...
I think we have direction. It's clear.
All right, fine. Thank you very much for your input.
So you don't need any motion tonight?
No.
Okay, have a nice vacation.
What's next, please?
At item 8E, City Attorney regarding discussion of regulating commercial events which may conflict with business improvement, improvement districts and recognized merchant associations. And that 8E1 is an ordinance for introduction.
Mr. Starbuck?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, a bit of a prefatory comment, then I'll turn to the City Attorney who's prepared this report. A question has come up regarding the derivation of this ordinance. And let me touch briefly on that. It was this last fall that through our normal special event permit process, which is really an administrative process, it doesn't involve the city council, there arose a, a conflict, a potential conflict between two events in the Montrose Shopping Park area relative to appropriate events, their impact on existing events and the likes. And we realized that our special events review process does not have a process for garnering input from those affected business groups. We came out the other end of, of that issue with my issuing an administrative policy that for any special event permits, or special events applied for, part of the administrative review process would include getting input from the affected, recognized business group, the case of Montrose, the Montrose Shopping Park, or Spar Heights, or Kenneth Village, or Adams Square, et cetera. And we have followed that administrative policy since then. It also became aware during that issue in the Montrose Shopping Park that there really wasn't an appeal process for someone who disagrees with the determination on a special events permit. And with that, in discussing with the City Attorney, it was agreed that if we're going to address something like an appeal process, if indeed that's what the council would like to see, we need to embed some of these changes in the municipal code. With that, the City Attorney set out then to craft an ordinance that would address both the administrative process we currently have, which is to receive input from affected business groups on special events permits that are in the public right-of-way in these areas, and at the same time also afford you some options for appeal of those decisions, potentially up to the city council. With that background, let me then turn to Scott Howard for an overview of the, the ordinance.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, thank you. Mr. Starbuck, that explanation fills in a lot of blanks, and I appreciate it. And so I'll just focus on the nuts and bolts of the ordinance before you. So Mr. Starbuck noted, there has been an administrative process in, in place since at least February of this year. This ordinance, in, for the most part, takes that administrative process and codifies it, and also adds some specific procedures so that there are definitive timelines, time limits, and appellate process involved. What this ordinance doesn't do, and I've had it claimed, or I've had it described to me as, as a potential veto by a possible business association, or a merchants association, or a business improvement district, a veto over a special event. This ordinance does not do that. As Mr. Starbuck noted, the administrative policy and is now transported into this ordinance before you, it will allow groups that have a defined purpose, whether through a business improvement district, which is established for a form of self-assessment, for promoting the viability of businesses within those defined geographic areas, as well as recognized merchants associations, which, which the city provides on either an annual or other basis, funding to assist them in promoting and maintaining the viability of business within their geographic districts. It gives them the opportunity to submit comments. When a special, a commercial special event, as defined in the ordinance, application for that type of event comes forward, is presented to the city clerk, it would give those organizations opportunities to comment and provide recommendations, which would then go to the city manager to review, along with traditional staff comments based upon the potential impacts that a, a requested special events, commercial special event may have. And as a result, what we've done is we've taken that, we've codified it in what we think is a fairly straightforward ordinance. There's a typographical which I will change if the ordinance is introduced, and created this additional appellate process. I want to point out that the appellate process is limited, however, to only the applicant or the affected merchants associations or BIDs. So it would not apply to any aggrieved member of the public. It would only apply to an applicant, for example, who had an application denied, or approved with conditions that the applicant is uncomfortable with or unhappy with. They would have the opportunity to appeal that to the council. Likewise, if one of the merchants, one or more of the merchants associations or BIDs determined that the commercial special event as proposed would have an impact, a negative impact on them, and the permit was approved or approved with conditions, and they felt that was inappropriate, that could be appealed to the city council as well. Other than that, and, and one thing I don't have in the ordinance, although there is a, and there is a provision for establishment of a fee, I did not include a fee resolution here. That would be coming back to you at another time. I would certainly appreciate your input now on whether, one, there should be a fee at all. Currently, the special events permit process does not have a fee attached to it. In discussing this briefly with members of the city clerk's office, they do spend a significant amount of time in not only processing the application, but circulating in different departments for input. And so there is time, staff time involved, for which essentially, there is no fee charged. So I would certainly appreciate any feedback on whether or not, one, you believe a fee should be charged, and if so, if there's a, we could certainly come up with a, an appropriate amount. It would not be high. And in fact, we could gradate it based upon the type of special events permit. If it's a non-recurring, one-day event by a homeowners association or a nonprofit, for example, the fee could be less than. If it were to be a recurring event, that is more of a, what I'll call, a commercial establishment that's using it to promote a particular business or enterprise. So with that, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions or comments? Okay. Okay. I have one. Speaker Jane Kane.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. I'm, my name is Jane Kane, and I am currently the president of the Montrose Verdugo City Chamber of Commerce. And I'm here with Mike Perry, our first vice president. And we are just here to address some of the concerns we had regarding this, I guess it's called a policy which then turns into an ordinance, and I think that's the procedure that it's called, so correct me if I'm, if I'm wrong. It's our understanding that if this policy becomes an ordinance, that outside of going through the normal levels through the city to acquire a permit to carry on an event, then our event would, would have to go to, I guess, adjacent associations, which I'm not aware of all the associations that are out there, Montrose Shopping Park may be the business district, and I don't know what else, would, would have to okay our event before we would go ahead and put it on. My inquiry here is that this would, and could impact some of the events that we have had over the years, our Oktoberfest, and currently our art walks and things like that. So kind of wondering if that could have an impact on us. We know as the chamber that, you know, we've, we've been around since the 1920s, we tried to promote goodwill and business in our neighborhood, and we would continue to do that. So what, what we're really requesting here is a little bit of definition on meaning adjacent, is that a mileage definition, is that, if you've got, like, say, our shopping park, the next adjacent shopping park maybe would be Brand, so is that considered an adjacency or an impact? And would it be an impact, you know, I guess there's a difference in opinion on the type of impact it could possibly be. So it was just some questions that we would like clarified a little bit. It's my understanding that tonight was the first night it was on for, up for discussion, and so what we were asking is, is that prior to the council making any judgment on this, that they would notify any of the organizations, whether they be business improvement districts, recognized merchants association, the different chambers in the city, and any other organizations that have put on, I guess, what were they called here, events of, um, commercial events. And I don't really know all that those would involve, and who would maybe have to go to the city for every event that's, for permits for the city, but any of those organizations that would be affected by this ordinance, we're asking that prior to city council taking a vote on that, that everybody be notified of the new ordinance, and clarified about all the, the, the rules and regulations in that, so that they can be aware of it, and then if they have any concerns, that they can be addressed prior to the council voting on it. And I know part of it was, as far as we, we are concerned, as far as the chamber, we are a nonprofit organization, so sometimes when we do do events, yes, we do have a dual purpose. And the dual purpose that we do have is to hopefully, number one, put the businesses first and create a better business environment, oh, sorry, but we also do do that for, for revenue for ourselves, to keep our doors open, so we can continue to serve our neighborhood. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Can you answer some of the questions?
I can, Mr. Mayor, and I'm glad Ms. Kane made those comments, because it's something that I left out, and I needed to, I needed to provide you with this information. One, in drafting this ordinance and the staff report, I did not contact the chambers of commerce, or, or the, the BIDs, or the merchants associations. In other words, this was not circulated for comment prior to, to that, I need to make sure I, I own up to that, so that her, her comment, that she would like to see notify all organizations that are affected by this, notify before any vote, certainly something you could consider, and put this over, should you choose to do so. It's not legally required, but should you choose to do so, you're certainly able to do so. The number of associations that would be impacted by this ordinance, in terms of who would receive a copy of a special events permit for comment, would be the two business improvement districts and the four recognized merchants associations. One of those is the Brand Boulevard of Cars. It's included in the administrative policy, they have a defined geographic area, and they are, although not provided financing on a regular annualized basis, have been provided financing in the past to help promote their, essentially their business of, of selling and releasing vehicles, and so they have been included. It's only those total of six that would receive the notice. The administrative policy right now does have a provision in it about looking at timing and adjacency. The ordinance does not. So any special event permit application that comes in would, as a matter of course, not only be circulated to staff, it would go to the six organizations described in the ordinance. So in terms of defining adjacency, unless you want to put a limit on who, on the types of permits that are submitted to the BIDs, or the, the business, the recognized merchants associations for comments, there is no such limitation in the ordinance as it stands right now.
Well, when it goes citywide, the Brand Boulevard of Cars may or may not have a comment about what's happening to Montrose.
Correct.
But we don't have to take their comment into consideration, period.
That is exactly right. In fact, I had this discussion with Mr. Starburg a little earlier today, about the type of comments, for example, if a comment came back that said, we don't like it, that's probably not going to be a strong basis for rejection of a special, of a commercial special events permit. You're going to need some basis and reason for denying it. So if the, if staff, and that includes staff comments as well. If staff indicates that it should be rejected or approved with conditions, and they, and here's the condition they want to attach, there needs to be a basis and reason for that. It just can't be arbitrary, it can't be whether, just, we don't like it, and we just don't like what's happening, it, there needs to be a basis and reason.
Okay, Ms. Najarian, followed by Mr. Weaver.
Well, let's look at, in particular, what Ms. Kane was talking about. She's coming from the Montrose Verdugo Chamber of Commerce, so there's no, they're not included, they're not one of the six reviewing entities, not the BID, they're not a BID, they're not the merchants association.
Correct.
So her group's application for Oktoberfest, let's say, would go to everyone, would go to the six, but not any one of the partic, let's say, let's say the folks, the Montrose Shopping Park Association wants to do a Oktoberfest, for lack of any other analogy. That request wouldn't necessarily go to them for their comment.
Correct.
So do you want to expand? I mean, the point is to get notice to everyone, so no one's surprised and saying, how can you do this, this is our, this is our one event, and it's really going to kill us.
The purpose, and, and there's actually a legislative purpose clause in the ordinance, the reason we focused on the recognized, the two BIDs, and the recognized merchants associations is because, one, they either self-finance themselves through assessment, or two, they receives, they receive funding from the city to provide the support and the promotion of business within somewhat defined geographic boundaries. Not, and, and this is certainly not intended to denigrate the Chamber of Commerce, I was a member of the Chamber of Commerce for many, many years, but I could be a member of the Chamber of Commerce in Montrose.
Did they revoke your license?
And live in South Glendale, or have a business in South Glendale. In other words, it's, it's a, it's a business support, it's a group that supports business, but it doesn't generally have defined geographic boundaries, like a BID has very defined boundaries, they're defined based upon an engineer's report.
How many, how many chambers of commercees do we have?
Well, I know of three for certain.
Three.
I know of three for certain.
Glendale.
Glendale, La Croix, and Montrose Verdugo.
We have the Armenian American Chamber of Commerce.
There may be a direct.
Korean.
Well, aside from ethnic-based, well, let's, let me put that aside. Would, do any of you guys think that it would be good to at least send a notice to these other groups in the effort to be as, as transparent as possible, so no one says?
I don't mind the three. Comment I was going to make, by going out to those, you may have a competing event that you are going to schedule same time, that would alert you that, oh, I don't want to be on the same day as this one, at that advantage, and going to the three chambers would also help in that way.
Depending how far in advance.
Yeah. Well, it's going to have to be at least two months in advance to go through the whole process, if it were to eventually end up an appeal process, for instance. You're talking two months out.
I mean, the point of this whole ordinance is to make sure that there's communication and transparency and notice between all the possible events that could be occurring, either concurrently or of the same nature that may adversely affect.
Well, if you want my response to that, the, I did not draft the ordinance with that as the primary focus, or the primary point. The ordinance's primary purpose is to ensure the, the continued viability of the businesses, whatever type of businesses they are, within the defined geographic boundaries of the BIDs and the merchants associations.
I see.
Because a conflicting event could potentially have a negative impact on the continued viability where the, the city has, whether through a BID or otherwise, with financial support, is trying to ensure the continued viability of those businesses, and what, somewhere within a village-type atmosphere or otherwise.
Mr. Starburg.
Yes, let me, let me add to that. The city's approach prior to the administrative policy was to look at these events within these business neighborhoods entirely from a city operational standpoint. Impact on existing events or, or businesses frankly, wasn't part of the equation. They were things like traffic safety, security, closing public streets, adequate restrooms, fire safety, and the likes. The event that arose last fall brought to our attention that there were probably other issues, not just purely city operational, that needed to be taken into consideration. So it was really focusing on the existing business groups and the impacts on them from special events that frankly aren't sponsored by them, maybe sponsored by somebody else. Kenneth Village had one recently, it was actually a private special event application, not on a public right-of-way, but on a private piece of property, for which the business group supported, but there were a number of merchants who had concerns about it. In the same way, if we had taken that one and just addressed it from the standpoint of city operations, all of those concerns wouldn't have been addressed. Now, in the end, we did try to address them, and in the end, it worked out okay, but the old policy was completely insensitive to those kinds of impacts. The administrative policy attempted to address that, but the feeling was, in order for it to really be effective, we need to embody this in an ordinance. So the focus is really on the established business groups.
Mr. Drayman was next, and Mr. Weaver.
I just wanted to add that part of it has to do with contractual issues and the intention of state legislation as well. When it comes to BIDs, the, in California, the state legislature determined that some of these areas, retail districts are special districts by nature of the fact that they're imperiled. They are imperiled economically, and so they created this, this process of creation of Montrose Shopping Park became the city's, BID became the city's first BID, and the language in the, in the state statutes is echoed in our contract with that BID. We sign a contract every five years, and it states what they are to do. And we charge them with the administration of merchandising activities to include public events, music events, dance events, et cetera. And so in the case of, let's say, Montrose BID, or Adams Square, we specifically have a contract with those, with those entities, saying that they're going to promote the merchandising activities as the state lays out in the state streets and highways code. So there are, in other words, there are organizations of record representing some of these business districts. Yeah, it's in the state streets and highways code.
Streets and highways.
Thirty-six thousand, that's second to the streets and highways code, there's a number of provisions involving business improvement districts, parking and business improvement districts.
Parking improvement district.
And Montrose and Adams Square are both established pursuant to the streets and highways code, and we adopt ordinances implementing that. It's a form of self-assessment to promote a whole host of things, but it's really to maintain the viability of business.
I guess the six that we talk about are easily definable, and you can tie them down by rules, regulations, whatever, you can tie it. But when you start to get out from there, and you start to get into the chambers and stuff, then just where are you going? I see the, the value in communicating with them, not that they probably don't know what is going on in their own areas, but where do you stop if you start to go there? Do you notify the homeowners' coordinator council? Where do you stop in doing that? Do you notify the other chambers? It just, you just can't tie it down. If you stick to the six, you do know. You have good, you can make a good case, we're staying with the six.
For myself, I think the six are obviously what this ordinance is directed to, but then having the different business groups on a mailing list and sending them the information.
Information.
I think, yeah, just an informational thing, that doesn't mean, obviously, the established chambers up in the Crescent Valley area, and the Glendale Chamber, and whatever other business groups are around. I don't think it would be particularly costly. I mean, you'd have that same list, there'd be eight or, or nine that you would be mailing to, and that would be it. And then it'd be up to them, whether they responded or didn't respond, whether they cared or, or didn't care.
We would hear from them.
But for the, but for the established merchant associations, both in Montrose and Adams Square, Kenneth Village, we know all the different ones in the city. I think it's very important that whatever takes place on their sort of public streets and their public areas, I think they need to be notified and have some input into, into what's going on. And I don't think it's particularly going to mean an, an extra level of, of process or extra level of bureaucracy. And then as a council member, I'm also interested in what's taking place. I mean, I, I don't like the idea of closing streets or doing things without having some general knowledge as to what's happening. Currently, it's pretty much in the hands of the city clerk, and sometimes things happen, we're not at all aware, and then all of a sudden, we've got issues to deal with, so those are my feelings. Mr. Drayman.
Well, I, I would agree with that, and especially emphasize the fact that how this particular issue that caused us to come forward occurred is because there was no communication on the part of, the city was processing a permit application, and, you know, the, the very BID that, that is charged with the duties, if you will, of administering the, the promotion of merchandising activities in that retail district, had no idea until late. And so this would, would help with that. But I don't see this, I don't see the primary function of this as communication, it's not at all. The primary function of this has to do with an added layer of oversight. Right now, there is no administrative oversight, other than what the city manager was referring to. Does this create a parking problem? Does this create a public safety problem? Are hazardous materials being handled properly, such as waste products, or whatever, wastewater? Are health issues being handled appropriately? But other than that, there is no, no public oversight. One of those things would be the appropriateness of it for a variety of reasons, conflict of interest, or, or a conflict of schedule. So that's what this is about, and not just for organizations to weigh in, but for an appeal process, so that if the entity proposing the event feels that they're not getting the, the level of response they want, they have someplace to go. Right now, that doesn't exist.
I just wanted to clarify. For instance, if the Montrose Merchant Association responds to something that the chamber is doing, their input saying, even if they say they don't like it, it has no more weight, there's no more weight than if the fire department or the police make a comment, the city clerk assembles all the comments, goes to the city manager to make a decision, and that decision can be appealed to the council, where we would then hear both sides. So there is that check and balance there. Is that right?
Yes.
And if I can, realistically, in that situation, what would likely happen is the group would be encouraged to meet with the group that, that had concerns and issues, and see if they can resolve them. That's why you'd want more substance than the just, we don't like it, you'd need to know why, what are they concerned with, and you would encourage the groups to get together. The effort would be for the city to not be in the middle of these, having to, to cut the baby, so to speak, and as a result, generate an appeal. baby, so to speak, and as a result, generate an appeal.
Question. So the BIDs, do they generally have a public financing of some sort?
No. They can, and certainly in some aspects, public agencies provide, as you said, they may provide them with additional monies, but their primary fundraising is through their own mechanisms and self-assessment, through the business and the P-Bid or the Bid. When they're set up, you do essentially an assessment, and that assessment is based upon geographic area, it could be linear footage, type of business.
So our BIDs, they're formed, are they self-formed, or the city has a part in forming them?
Well, the city actually holds a public hearing and forms them pursuant to state law.
Okay, so unlike...
We might add, though, to your question about public funding, five of the six, not including the auto dealers, but the other five business neighborhoods, all receive an annual allocation through the Economic Development Program and the Glendale Redevelopment Agency.
They're not BIDs.
To help support their promotion. They're not all BIDs, but some, they all do receive some level of support.
So we're talking about minus one. Now, the chamber is completely a private organization, right?
Yes.
See, to me, that the crux of this, and the reason that it's those groups, is because they're sort of quasi-official bodies. They're not a completely private body, they're not a group of just local merchants, so we're talking about events on public property that impact public entities. And that's where I think that having this level of review makes sense. It's not a question of opening up these events to review from any stakeholder in the city. It's about quasi-public entities that are using redevelopment funds that the city has a vested financial interest in, being sure that we're not adversely affecting them by an event that's happening on public property. It's not about events on private property, it's about, you know, those public events. And that's where I think that the city has a real responsibility to be sure that we're protecting that investment, because that's taxpayer money. So that's where it comes down to me. And that's why it's just those groups and not opening it up to, you know, to every other group or every resident in the area. And that's where I think the city has a responsibility to make sure that events that it allows on its public property doesn't work at odds with the groups that it's trying to support.
Mr. Drayman.
Well, along with that point, there is the very fact that chambers of commerce in general, not exclusively, but in general, do not end up being the advisory body or advisory board for BIDs. And the reason is what you pointed out earlier, Mr. City Attorney, and that is that the membership of a BID is defined by physical boundaries. It's kind of like living in a condominium. You live there, you're going to pay an assessment. You operate a business within the boundary, you pay an assessment. The membership of a given chamber of commerce, whether it's Glendale or Montrose, Verdugo City, or Crescent Valley, their membership can be businesses within that district and businesses in any other part of the city, or not in this city at all. And in fact, cases have been made that have actually disqualified chambers of commerce from serving as BID advisory boards for that very reason. Let's say I own a shoe store in Burbank, and I am on the advisory board casting votes about what's going to go on in a district removed from my store where I have competitors. That's a problem. That's a potential conflict of interest. And that comes to your point, Councilmember Friedman, about how the city recognizes the neighborhood business districts, that's the actual term of art, by the way, neighborhood business districts, and why the city supports them with its, with some of its development dollars. In fact, even that $15,000 development dollars was initially devised by the city council to be an incentive to get those neighborhood business districts to become BIDs. In other words, we'll give this to you for, what was it, three years? You have three years to become a BID.
It's hard started.
And if you don't, then you won't receive that money any longer. Well, you had one neighborhood business district, Adams Square, which became a BID, largely with the help of Councilmember Weaver at that time. But we just continued offering those funds because the thought was that
Good idea.
That those funds were necessary to continue to invest in those retail districts, so.
Okay, any other comments?
The ordinance introduced?
If that's your pleasure, it's before you for introduction. And again, if there's any interest in even broaching the notion of a fee resolution, I can come back with another staff report with some options for you. I did note in the staff report that you certainly are free to discuss that now, but I can bring that, given the lateness of the hour, I can certainly bring that back at a different time.
I'd personally like to see it in the future, what numbers you're talking about.
We're not, yeah, there won't be large. I'll go with the city clerk's office, and we'll look at some graduated scale options based upon nonprofit versus, and recurring versus non-recurring events.
I'll introduce the ordinance, but you think we should notify the chambers so they can at least come and comment, even if they don't agree, or, just to be fair, by all the different chambers.
It's easy enough to do that.
The ordinance is in final form, if we're not doing it tonight.
Final form, I just want to make sure I have the direction. The direction is to include the chambers in providing them with notice.
Right.
But not include them within the appellate process.
No, neither.
That's the consensus.
Okay.
Other than the exception, if they are the applicant, then they're directly involved.
Absolutely, and that won't change. I didn't, I wasn't hearing consensus to change that. The applicant would still have the rights.
When would this come back to us? Next week or...
Next week. It'll be back next week. Back next Tuesday.
Okay, the ordinance has been introduced at 8:00 E. Next, please.
Item 9A, Director of Administrative Services Finance, Regarding Approval of Final Engineer's Report and Ordering the Levy and Collection of Annual Assessments for the North San Fernando Road Corridor Landscape Maintenance District for Fiscal Year 2009-10. At 9A1 is a resolution approving the engineer's annual levy report for the city of Glendale's North San Fernando Road Corridor Landscape Maintenance District for Fiscal Year 910. At 9A2 is a resolution ordering the levy and collection of the city of Glendale's North San Fernando Road Corridor Landscape Maintenance District for Fiscal Year 2009-10.
Okay, I'll open the public hearing. I don't have any cards. I will close the public hearing.
Move the item, Mr. Mayor, at 9A1 and 2.
I'll second.
Okay, any other comments? Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Drayman.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver.
Hi.
Mayor Quintero.
Look who stayed to 10:30 at 9:00.
No, I feel bad.
Is there a card?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, a gentleman in the back has his hand up.
Oh.
Were you at a card?
What's your name, sir?
Dennis Marzoni.
Oh, you put Oral Communications. I'm sorry, I thought you were there for the next, for the next, you want to speak on this item, is that correct?
No, I don't.
No, he wanted Oral Communications.
I want to speak on...
Oh, okay.
Okay, you're fine.
Mr. Mayor, as I told you before the council meeting, I want to skip out.
He'll call your name in just a moment.
Okay. All right, next, please.
Okay, we're back to item 6, Oral Communications. Discussion is limited to items not a part of this agenda. Each speaker is allowed five minutes. Council may question or respond to the speaker, but there will be no debate or decision. The city manager may refer the matter to the appropriate department for investigation and report.
Okay, Dennis Marzoni. Your name for the record, and you have five minutes, Mr. ...
Dennis Marzoni. Mayor Quintero, city council members. My name is Dennis Marzoni. I'm here, I'm a cancer survivor. But what I'm here for is, I'd like to open up a pharmacy here in this city. There's, at this time, there are, at the present time, there are two doctors in the city who give recommendations for medical marijuana. And the doctors' names are Dr. Shire and Dr. Presser. They're located at 600 North Brand Boulevard, and their operation is called Marijuana Medicine Evaluation Center. They are so busy that they need to, they're so busy there that you have to have a appointment to get into their office. My contention is there are a lot of citizens here in Glendale who would like to have a place to get their medical marijuana. And at this time, we have no place in Glendale that will give this opportunity for people like me and people who have a sickness. I was wondering what type of permit I would have to get in order to do something of this nature. I understand there's a section, there's a code section that's 3012.O2O, which is, it says that uses are not listed in the code are not allowed, although the code provides for an exception. I was wondering, I was just wondering what process I'd have, what I'd have to do in order to open a dispensary in this town.
Okay, well, we don't directly answer questions, so...
Okay, I'm sorry.
Wait till after the Oral Communications is over, and then we can refer you to the planning department or whatever's...
Maybe Glendale could be the first one to tax medical marijuana, if we could get this permit. Also, maybe we can get DLBAMAS stimulus package to finance this. I don't know. But thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you, and you can have a seat. Okay, Herbert Milano, I don't see him in the audience. Margaret Hammond, followed by Tamara Moessian.
Good evening, again, your honor. Mayor Quintero, councilmen, members of staff, still awake, and the audience, I'm sure who, a lot of them gone to bed by now. My name is Margaret Hammond. First off, I want to bring up something that's going to be happening in our plaza, the city plaza. On Friday, July 31st, it's going to be our annual Night on the Plaza, and it's going to be, of course, the committee, the city committee, Clean and Beautiful, are more or less sponsoring it, and big help from the city staff. We're going to have about 20 restaurants offering food, free, by the way, with the price of the $15 ticket. And we're going to have a great live band, and there's going to be auctions. And included with the ticket, we have, when you purchase it, the opportunity to win two tickets, airline tickets, Southwest has given us, and we're going to be including that in the, as a, in the price of your ticket to come to the event. We're hoping that we'll get people, last year was a terrific event, it gets larger every year, and it's, you know, we put in a lot of effort from our committee, and of course, the staff from Neighborhood Services, and some of the other staff parks and some of the others also come and help us out with a lot of things that we need to have help with. And then our next great event, I know you have the cruise night in the meantime, but is our National Night Out, which is going to be Tuesday, August 4th. That is going to be from 6:00 to 8:00. And this is a chance for our whole community to show support of our police department. We need sponsors for all six locations, particularly, you know, the Pacific Park location, where the South Glendale Partners are very optimistic about the success of this first-time event there. And this, we're hoping, will help to foster neighborhood watch, and a lot of youth will come and be involved in the event and have the feeling that they can come to the police department when they need them. In that area, it's really a necessary feeling that they should have, because, as we all know, there's a lot of problems around that area. There are going to be six locations, and Adams Hill at the park, at the gas station, the Alex Theater is going to be having their event, the Verdugo Hospital in the parking lot, and Glendale High School, young lady that was here that spoke to you, the 15, I think, 16-year-old young lady, and Pellicone Park are going to be having the event. And as I said, we do need sponsorship, anybody that would like to help us out donating a few dollars, whatever you can, we would really appreciate it. I can be called for my area at 818-242-7334, and we're hoping that we'll get some more support from the community. I would like to bring up what is happening with our River Walk, and when is it going to be scheduled to get started working on it? Now, and that's a great place for a bike ride, and what type of bike? Mr. Najarian, how about a three-wheeler? Well, you can put a little basket on the back, and I know my sister in Toronto finds it's a wonderful way to get around town and save gas. She can't, she's not allowed to drive anymore, she has eyesight problems, but anyway, she takes her chances with a bike. And my last comment is, if you keep allowing inferior vinyl window changeouts in non-historical districts, how can new historic districts get designated if the homes are all, have all been made ineligible by allowing things to be done to them, as I said, taking off roofs, taking outdoors, and plastering up arched windows? I mean, that certainly destroys a home for being nominated for a historic district. So if anybody is interested, I have tickets for the Night on the Plaza, $15 for adults and $5 for children.
When is the Night Out, Margaret? This Friday?
The 31st.
Oh, sorry.
The 31st. We have a week. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll get information on the three-wheeler after the meeting. Tamara Moessian.
Not riding a three-wheeler.
Followed by Nancy Comensom.
Good evening, almost good morning. My name is Nancy Camo. And in anticipation of the Foothill Lumber Project coming up Tuesday, the hearing on Tuesday, the Highway Highlands Neighbors of North Glendale have prepared a file for you highlighting some of the events and issues surrounding this project from the perspective of the community. And I prepared, we prepared, one of these for each of you, your homework assignment. And the name's on the side. Mr. Najarian. And, can't read without my glasses on, good. I'll get these out. And that's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you very much for-
Look at these in the comfort of your own homes. And I think this is the last one. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much for your participation and patience.
One of these.
Who's going to take Weaver?
I think I'm going to have to accuse her.
Yeah, we can use her some.
Okay, Mr. Howard.
Should I say that now or just?
Hang on a minute.
Okay.
Mr. Howard, did you have any comments at Speaker's request?
Mr. Marzoni's request to open up under the Compassionate Use Act a marijuana dispensary pursuant to state law, we've responded to that, noting that under our municipal code, that type of use is prohibited. The exception he speaks of is where the zoning administrator makes a finding that their, that a proposed business operation or use is consistent with other uses in the zone. She has already determined that this use is not consistent with any use in a commercial zone, and therefore, there is no permit that is available for that. There's currently litigation in other cities that will ultimately address the issue of an outright ban of marijuana dispensaries consistent with the Compassionate Use Act. And at this point in time, my suggestion is if you'd certainly, like, applying department you can, but at this point in time, the determination by the zoning administrator, who is vested by code with the authority to make the determination of the compatible use or compatible business use, has already been made, and that decision, unless she reverses herself, stands, and there's no, that use is not permitted in a commercial zone in the city of Glendale.
Did you want to cut, well, Mrs. Tamar?
The only other item might be Margaret Hammond's request for an update on the River Walk project, and the project is moving forward. I don't have the specifics with me. You did get a report from George Chapchan last week. I will direct George to take Mrs. Hammond to lunch and give her a complete update.
Mr. Najarian, did you have any comments about the general nature of Ms. Mocessian?
Yes, very, I mean, very brief terms. She is not happy with the council. She is not happy with myself or Mr. Drayman, who apparently we indicated we would offer her some help with her issues, ongoing issues with her landlord.
Okay.
That's essentially the-
Thank you for that update.
I left out the juicy parts, but yeah, this is a family show, so.
Thank you for that update. Mr. Drayman.
As I've pointed out, Mr. Mayor, a number of times over the last two years, being here and having met with Mrs. Mocessian, innumerable times, and his staff having met with her innumerable times, Councilmember Najarian and others having met with her. There is a significant difference between trying to help someone address their problems, whatever they may be, guaranteeing them an answer to their problems, especially when many of them are, don't fall within the purview of city government in any way, shape, or form. So I just, I always like to add that to the record because this is the overarching comment each time, so.
I think Dr. Phil might be able to do.
I'm afraid this is beyond even Dr. Phil, our own Dr. Phil, or I think the real Dr. Phil, so.
Okay, any other comments? Right, what's next, please?
Is there any new business?
Yes, there is.
I would like to move that the city attorney be and hereby is authorized to initiate legal action in Superior Court. The case name and other particulars are unspecified, as to do so would jeopardize the city's ability to effectuate service of process in the unserved parties. The names of the defendants and other particulars shall be disclosed as required by law. The city attorney is further authorized to incur any and all expenses necessary in connection with said matter.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Drayman.
Yes.
Friedman.
Yes.
Najarian.
Yes.
Weaver. Mayor Quintero.
Yes. Next, please.
Adjournment.
Two adjournments.
Okay, and we will adjourn in memory of Lance Corporal Pedro Flores.